I'm not seeing, ah, there we go. So, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the June meeting of the scrutiny board. The actual status of the meeting is a remote consultative meeting. And it's based basically on the way the council and scrutiny boards have decided to operate in the light of current Covid restrictions. If any members of the public want further details about that, then please feel free to contact us through the various mechanisms that are available. I'm going to start by asking board members to introduce themselves. I won't ask officers and members who are attending for specific items to do that yet until we reach those items on the agenda. So going through in alphabetical order, councillor Bentley.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. It's Jonathan Bentley. I am councillor for Wheatwood Ward. And it's my new member on this board, but have been on several scrutiny boards over the last 10 years or so.
Welcome, Jonathan. Neil Buckley.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Neil Buckley, I'm the councillor for Woodley.
Hey, councillor Dai.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Katie Dai. I'm councillor for Kilinbeck and Seacroft.
Thank you, councillor Gettings.
Morning, I'm councillor Bob Gettings, representing Morley. And I'm mute to this committee.
Welcome to you too, Bob. Councillor Heselwood, who's substituting for councillor Harry Forsey.
Councillor Julia Heselwood, Bramley and Stanley Ward, and as councillor Trustwell said so in today.
Welcome, Julian. Thank you for stepping in. Actually, you're deputising, sorry, you're substituting for councillor Goddard as opposed to councillor Asane, who's actually next on the list. So thank you for stepping into the breach at such short notice. It is appreciated. Councillor Asane, my apologies. Would you like to introduce yourself? Is Harry with us?
I don't think councillor Asane's joined us yet, Chair.
Okay. Councillor Martin has had to pop off to deal with an emergency, but hopes to join us in due course. Ah, here she is. Hi, Lisa. You've just seen time to introduce yourself.
Hello, apologies. Thank you, Paul. Lisa Martin, councillor for Roundhead Ward.
And a new member of the board. Welcome.
Sorry, elected in May this year.
Yeah. Councillor Shazad.
Good morning, Chair. It's councillor Mohammed Shazad from the Motown and Meemwood Board, and I'm on my third year of being on this board now. Thank you.
And it doesn't seem a day too long. Thank you, Mohammed. Nicola. Councillor Sharp. Nicole Robben.
Morning, everyone. Morning, everyone. Thanks, Chair. I'm Nicole Sharp, and I represent the Temple News and Ward, and I'm also a new member on the panel.
Welcome. Okay, councillor Taylor.
What, everyone? Councillor Jonathan Taylor, for Swithin Road and Ward.
Councillor Wadsworth.
Good morning, everyone. Councillor Paul Wadsworth. I represent Guyzden Road and Ward, and I'm an old member to this board. I don't know how long I've been on, Paul, but you better tell me. You're a crack at these things.
I honestly don't know, Paul, but I think I upset councillor Dai by referring to her as an old hack, like me and like you and one or two other members of the board. And I'm councillor Paul Truswell. I represent Middleton and Bellisle, and I chair this scrutiny board. Okay, well, moving on to the formal items of the agenda, because this is a consultative rather than formal public meeting of the board, we're able to dispense with some of the normal introductory housekeeping items on the agenda. So the first item on the agenda is the declaration of disclosable pecuniary interests. I've not received any notification of that, and I'm assuming that everyone's notifications are in order and they've got no specific notification to make, but if you have, please shout out. Well, I'll move on to agenda item two, which is the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 7th of April. And in my time-honored fashion, I will go through page by page. Please shout out, A, if there are any corrections to be made, if you were a member of the board at that time, or any matters arising that you wish to bring to the attention of the board. So I'm going through page five, page six, page seven, page eight, and page nine. Okay, if there are no amendments or matters arising, I will seek the approval of the next formal public meeting of the board to sign those as chair is the correct record. Right, that brings us on to agenda item three, scrutiny board terms of reference. All wonderful reading. I keep it by my bedside when I'm having sleep problems. But I don't know, Becky, whether you've got any points to raise on this. Basically, we just note these every year.
Yes, Chair, there's no significant changes for this board.
Okay, so that takes us on to page 31. Agenda item four. And that is the performance update. As I explained to those members who attended the pre-meeting, we've actually done this in two tranches. Some of the reports back on the KPIs came to our previous meeting, but unfortunately, we couldn't cover them comprehensively because there were officers who mainly due to Covid considerations were not able to compile the reports or to attend the meeting. In order to make this a little bit more digestible, I'm going to divide the reports on these KPIs into various sections. But before I do that, I'll just ask the officers and, do we have councillor Hayden with us?
You do?
I cannot see her.
Good morning.
Oh, sorry, Helen. You change your hairstyle every time I see you. Plus the fact that I'm as blind as a bat without my reading specs on. Right, okay. So starting with councillor Hayden, I will ask her and the officers attending for this item to introduce themselves. So Helen.
Hi, good morning and thank you, Chair. It's lovely, it's great to be here this morning, and I'm not going to say much about the performance report, although I will leave that to the officers, although I'd like to thank each and every one of, everyone involved in the last year in all the departments that are featuring this report for their great work under very difficult circumstances that we've all had to deal with over the last 15, 16 months. So it's different to how a performance report would normally be, but I think we all appreciate that. And I just want to thank all the staff for their adaptability, for the way that they switched roles or adapted to and responded to the needs of the people in Leeds for the last year. It has brought some benefits to some schemes like the road schemes because of the lack of traffic over the lockdowns. So, which, I mean, there wasn't many upsides to a global pandemic, but there have been in this, in some areas. So I'll leave it there, Chair, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that introduction, Helen. I think we should, we would all say amen to the brilliant work that our officers have undertaken during the course of the pandemic and are continuing to do so. I will go through the list of introductions. Next on my list, Martin Farrington.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Martin Farrington, I'm the director of city development.
Thank you. Eve.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Eve Ruthers. I'm the chief officer for culture and economy.
Martin Elliott.
Morning, Chair. Martin Elliott, head of strategic planning.
Do we have Paul Foster? Appears not. Gary Bartlett? Don't see Gary anywhere at the moment. Tim, we definitely do have Tim.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Tim Rollatt. I'm from the council's intelligence and policy service, and my team produces or coordinates the production of the reports in conjunction with the various council services.
Okay, thank you. Tim, Chris.
Morning, Chair. Morning, everyone. I work with Tim in the intelligence and policy service, pulling the reports together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I don't have anybody else on my list attending for this item, although I noticed that there are some officers who I think have come in before the item for which they are attending. I would just say by way of introduction, and I think probably this will be said by some of the officers, that clearly some of these figures have a major time lag on them. Like, we only get some of the figures for 2019, well into period, almost 18 months after the year to which they apply. We've obviously got the impact on some of the KPIs of Covid. And as I said previously, some of the KPIs have been addressed at a previous meeting. So to make the whole process a little bit more digestible, I think if we could start off by someone introducing targets or KPIs, one to seven, which basically fall under the umbrella of economy. Then we've got a couple relating to housing, then a few relating to training and education. But could we start off with the first seven that relate to economic issues? Who's going to do that? Is that you, Martin, or Eve?
If I just do the general introduction of them, councillor Trustwell, and then we can refer any specific questions to whoever's best to answer them, if that works for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So in terms of the KPIs on the first tranches the Chair outlines, the first is employment in Leeds. This is green in terms of the rag rating of the indicator. The 2019 revised provisional number for employment is 473,005. This is a marginal increase from the 471,200 confirmed in 2018, with unemployment between January and December 2020 running at 4.1%. In terms of GVA, this is one that, as the Chair outlined, has that lag time. So the 2019 result is not yet available. The 2018 result was reported to quarter two. Was reported to quarter two of the infrastructure board meeting. On number of new business startups, that has a rating of green. The 2020 result is 5,232 startups. In 2021, the year-to-date, so that's January to March of this year, it's 1,154. That sits against a target of 4,338. On number four, the number of new business scale-ups, the result for 2019 is 585. This is a new measure, so it's not directly comparable with the previous year, which was 467. On number five, business survival rate, the 2020 result is due in November 2021, so we'll be able to report it. Then the 2019 result reported to quarter two of the, of this board meeting. And then on item six, change in business rates since 2017 reevaluation, that has an indicator of red. The 2020-21 result is 462.9 million. That's a reduction of 4.1 million, so 0.9% on the 2017 reevaluation. In terms of headline issues, there are backlogs in the business rates team, the value of office agency, which they're now clearing. There has been a slight increase since April 1st, which does demonstrate a reversal of previous trends. And then on number seven, on visitor economic impact, the 2020 result is not yet available, but the 2019 result reported to quarter two of this board meeting. So that's a headline summary of those first seven indicators, councillor Trustwell.
Okay, thank you, Martin. Eve, have you got anything to add to that?
Just a couple of points. So we do have more up-to-date information about unemployment figures that we receive on a monthly basis, and furlough, which members may be interested in. So the UC claimant count for May was 47,061. It's still on an upward trend at the moment. We perhaps expect to fall for June after the 17th of May changes to restriction. The other point that we get data on at the moment is furlough figures. Members may be interested to know that the furlough figure in March was 47,600. It reduced in April to 37,000, a reduction of 22%, which again is probably indicative of the changes to restrictions as the economy opens up. And there is a significant lag on some of the KPI data that's reported here. So in terms of the future reports to scrutiny board chair, I would expect some of these numbers to go down, even while they might be going up in, you know, in the lived experience of numbers going up, if that makes sense. So when the formal numbers are reported, there may be a downward trend. But actually, our experience now with restrictions being lifted is that we are seeing more jobs vacancies and many more employers also coming to us for support to recruit into vacancies.
Okay, thank you, Eve. I don't know about other members of the board, but I can hear radio or television in the background. So could I just ask all members apart from me to mute their microphones unless they're actually speaking? Does anyone have any questions on those first seven indicators? Yes, Jonathan? Jonathan?
Sorry, Chair. Thank you. Just having trouble with. Here we go. Thanks very much. I thought it's really, really good report. Lots of numbers which you often think as a councillor, I wonder what, you know, and then you realise they're here all the time. So just a question on business startups. I saw that the definition is based on either companies' house and business bank account openings. Obviously, companies' house will pick up limited company data and business bank accounts speak for itself. But I just wondered whether there's any indication of smaller businesses than that, people who perhaps, you know, the one-man bands who often won't go through a company's house, but also might not go through a formal business bank account. So I wanted to see any cross-reference to HMRC or anything like that to validate these numbers.
Okay, thanks for that. Jonathan, who's going to pick that up?
I'll come back on that one, Chair. So I'm sure councillor Truswell often interrogates this particular one, don't you councillor Truswell? And we've also done some, we did some research historically on this indicator, but haven't been able to follow up on that research more recently because there is indeed a lack of richness to some of it, councillor Bentley, in terms of understanding the nature of startups, because there's a really wide range of businesses that are starting up. And kind of the need to sort of try and get a bit of a feel for whether some of those startups, what sectors those startups might be in. And as you say, also people that may not actually register their business for VAT or company's house. So the reality is probably there are businesses, people that are starting businesses, are self, you know, becoming self-employed, they're not necessarily coming through these numbers. And also that at the moment, we can't necessarily differentiate between the nature of some of these businesses. So whilst our KPI is focused on an increase in numbers, what I couldn't tell you is, actually, are we happy that the increase of the type of businesses that are starting up is the type of businesses we'd like to see? So we have been doing some work recently related to this with the University of Leeds, focused primarily actually on trying to understand high potential startups, but starting to look at how you can look at different types of data to get a feel. So happily, Chair, provide maybe a little bit more information about that as by way of follow-up, if you would like.
Okay, thanks very much, Eve. Yeah, one of my concerns about this has always been how much of it is attributable to bogus self-employment scams and things like that. Jonathan, do you want to come back on that at all?
No, just to say thank you. That's an interesting answer. And my question was really based on not only sort of the bogus self-employed, but also to some extent how sometimes self-employed numbers are hiding unemployment. You know, where you set up that you say you're self-employed but not actually getting any work.
Right. Okay, thanks very much. And now turning to the very experienced stalwart councillor Dai. Is that better?
Oh, yes, I'm pleased. Thank you very much. Well, first of all, a general comment on the report. I mean, it's clear that it's been done in really difficult circumstances in terms of gathering data, and it would be interesting to see as we start to come out of lockdowns and things hopefully return back to normal, how things, as Eve suggested, they would change, because I think it's, you know, lots of strange data, I think, will hopefully iron itself out. But that was just a comment. And my question was specifically about hospitality. I was in a meeting earlier this morning saying that there are a lot of positions in hospitality that businesses are finding really difficult to fill at the moment. So I wondered if there was any specific work being done around that.
Happy to come back in, Chair.
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, so that is the case, councillor Dai, that there are a high number of vacancies in hospitality. And we suspect this is for a couple of reasons. One, that hospitality did not necessarily keep all its staff on furlough, let some staff go. And those individuals have sought alternative employment in other areas where they may feel that that's now a more stable employment. So for example, they may have moved into working for a food retailer or in delivery and so on. So that's one thing. The second thing is, we suspect that a number of people who are from the EU who are here working in this sector may have left the country as a combination of Covid-19 and Brexit, so reducing the workforce. So in terms of work that we're doing to try and support the sector, the employment and skills team has been working with a number of organisations that are struggling to recruit, to help them recruit from our cohort of clients that the employment and skills team support. And employers then have to accept that they may be recruiting someone who's probably 80% ready for employment and then consider what wrapper they need to put around that. So so this is where, this is sort of what I was indicating, or saying that our lived experience at the moment is that we're having quite a number of employers coming to approach our employment and skills team for support, which will hopefully mean that we can then help people get into those jobs. But there's a wider sort of piece there that we want to explore as part of our refresh of our talent skills plan to understand how we can make sure that people can respond to that. So I think chefs is an area at the moment, councillor Dai, that we're hearing reported where there is real demand. So for example, so we really need to try and make sure that some of our skills providers in the city are responding to where those shortages have appeared because of these strange and quite quick changes in the labour market.
Okay, thanks, Eve. Do you want to come back on that at all, Katie?
No, that sounds fine. I mean, I assume the employment and skills team are working with colleges as well, aren't they, on that?
Yeah, absolutely. And if we can, if you're interested to hear more, then slatters know, because we can either pick up individually or or, you know, feed more back to scrutiny in future reports.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I've got Neil and then Lisa. Neil.
Thank you, Chair. Eve mentioned the unemployment figures. And the, well, not the unemployment figures, the furlough figures. And I was interested that it's gone down from sort of 47,000 to 37,000, if I heard correctly. But the unemployment figure was about 4.1% from memory. And at one time, we would have thought that was on the low side, actually. And it's only, by my calculations, in Leeds, based on these figures, only gone up a little bit in this period. And I just wondered, given that furlough has obviously taken people who might well have been, have gone straight into unemployment, what forecasts were kind of circulating about when furlough ends, what the actual unemployment figure is likely to turn out to be?
Over to you, Eve.
I'll look at my crystal ball. No, sorry, Chair.
Indeed.
Councillor Buckley. So it's difficult for us to say. So we, so there was initial increase in unemployment last year after the first restrictions came into place and before furlough was put in place. And then the sort of change has been fairly consistent or steady between then, although we have seen an increase the last couple of months, which we think is to do with people coming off furlough and not everybody going back into work. We also think that the furlough is actually stopping people applying for some of the vacancies in hospitality that councillor Dai referred to, because if they're on furlough at the moment, actually, might rather stay on furlough than apply for some of those jobs. So there's a lot, there's a lot that we can't necessarily anticipate in terms of how things progress. But I suppose our expectation is that we are likely to see a continued increase in unemployment figures over the coming months as furlough drops off. But what's reassuring is that 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 drop from 47,600 to 37,000 isn't turning into unemployment figures. So you're not seeing that same number popping up in the unemployment figures. So in effect, you know, furlough has reduced the numbers of people that are going into unemployment, but it is also creating strange impacts on the, on the labour market in the city and the country as a whole.
Okay, thank you. Neil, do you want to come back?
No, just to say I appreciate the answer, Chair. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Lisa. Lisa, you're muted.
Apologies. Thank you, officers, for that clearly presented report. That was really helpful. And following on from a bit what councillor Bentley and a bit what councillor Buckley were saying, the unemployment figures do, on the face of it, look good news at that low level. But I'm also worried about it masking the quality of employment and fake self-employment and very low-paid, zero-hours contracts. I saw a figure somewhere and might have misread it, about 14% of people in Leeds on universal credit, which as I say, I may have read that wrong, but I'm just concerned about the quality of employment in Leeds and have we got some way of monitoring that? Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Eve?
Apologies. So councillor Martin, thanks for the question. So we've, it's something that we're concerned about from an inclusive growth perspective, this point about quality of employment. And we'll come, we might come back to this when we get further on in the report, so try not to address it now, Chair, but there is, if you look at the destinations for the people that we're supporting into employment as well, they are tending to go into entry-level jobs in particular sectors, including childcare and construction. It's one of the later pieces of work. So it ties in with us focusing our skills support, our adult skills support, and our work across the city in relation to helping people get into jobs with higher skills requirements. And there's also a piece of work that we need to do to try and understand what the demand is around helping people skill up that are in work. Martin Long is on the call, and I know he has the, at his fingertips faster than me, the percentage of the population that are claiming universal credit. So Martin, would you mind just clarifying that for councillor Martin and the scrutiny?
Yeah, sure. Thanks. Morning, everyone. Yeah, so if you look at, so the the universal credit claimant count is in two parts, so 47,000 are unemployed, but there are 75,000 who are claiming. But there are seventy five thousand who are claiming universal credit in employment. So there's around thirty thousand who are obviously in, in jobs that are poorly paid enough that they also need to claim universal credit at the same time. Um, which is fourteen point five percent. So you're right, councillor, in terms of, in terms of the figures. Um, so a lot of what we're doing as a service at the moment, and we've just secured some funding through WICAR, is to try and focus. We've got lots of support for people who are unemployed through European funding. But then if you're in work, even if you're working a day a week on really poor pay, you're not eligible for that funding. So we've, we've, we're developing a programme with the Command Authority to, to focus on those people who are in at-risk jobs, poorly paid jobs, or jobs where kind of the growth is, is, is going backwards and how we can reskill them into, into some of the, the kind of digital tech-type jobs that are where the, the future is going to lie for Leeds. So, so there is quite a lot of work going on and happy to, to pick that up separately.
Okay, thank you, Martin. Um, do you want to come back on that?
No, it's reassuring that, um, thank you, Martin. That's reassuring that officers have, have got their eye on this because, um, yeah, it, just, just the headline figures that we've been presented with do mask that, um, that, that sort of picture of in-work poverty in Leeds. Um, yeah, so thank you.
Okay, I've got no other board members indicating that they've got questions on the first seven, uh, KPIs. So thank you, officers, for responding to those. The next two on per use thirty seven and thirty eight, uh, KPIs eight and nine relate to housing. So I think that will be Martin Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah. So, so first of all, the, um, the growth in new homes in Leeds for the past year. Um, and whilst these figures show that there was a, an undershooting of the target set in the core strategy for the number of homes required, actually just undershooting, um, by seven percent of the target is actually considered to be a pretty good performance this year, given that we had two lockdowns where construction activity really slowed. Um, and it really is testament, I think, to the, um, efforts that were put in place to keep the construction sector going, um, in the city. Um, that these figures are actually as high as they are. So we're actually seeing this as, um, quite a positive end-of-year result for new house building within the city. Certainly, there are no concerns from our perspective in terms of, uh, a, a pipeline of supply. If you look at that, um, table on page thirty eight, you'll see it taking a slight dip. That really isn't a downward trajectory because there are sufficient housing sites um, within the current land supply in Leeds for that to come back up, um, maintain or indeed increase um, housing requirements. And that's dependent on a number of things. One is, um, the scale of planning permissions that we're seeing coming through in the city centre uh, and the city centre fringe, but also in terms of some key strategic sites that have either got planning permission or going through the planning process within the outer areas of Leeds, um, which can deliver at, at scale and at speed once they've been through the planning process. Secondly, number of affordable houses delivered. If we go to, um, page forty one, you'll see the overall figure there at four, three, nine. Now, when measured against performance over the past sort of eight to ten years, that looks reasonable and it's actually probably a, a, a good year for affordable housing delivery. And if you look at the, um, the components of that delivery, you can see that the blue component from section one oh six is that level of affordable housing that's delivered off the back of planning applications. Um, and if you recall, members, that's seven percent in the city centre and the inner area, fifteen percent in some of the intermediate markets in Leeds and thirty five percent affordable housing in some of the outer areas. Now, that's still underplaying the level of section one oh six contribution that we could and should be getting for the city. And that's partly because most of the housing delivery over the past few years has been within the city centre in the inner area, which have the lowest amount of affordable housing, section one oh six attached to it. As we see those sites, um, those greenfield sites that were released through the site allocations plan come forward, we should see those figures increase because that'll be thirty five percent of any houses that are brought forward. The, um, figures themselves, the four hundred and thirty nine, do kind of mask rather a complicated delivery picture. And you'll see within those pages, a number of different affordable housing streams that are being brought together in order to boost and bolster that, not least the council's own, um, council housing growth programme alongside the operation of registered providers. And registered providers, um, are, uh, regulated um, in order to provide social housing. It's, uh, for, for some new members to the group. Um, they, they may know registered providers as housing associations. The, uh, the second thing is, we recognise that that four hundred and thirty nine does still sit, um, some way below the overall needs for affordable housing in the city that were identified in the core strategy. Now, those overall needs reflect not just, um, the additional annual requirement for affordable housing that's generated each year, which sits at four hundred and thirty four homes. So you can see we're actually meeting that. But it does also include a historic under provision of affordable housing, of seven hundred and ninety six affordable homes. So in total, if the city each year were to meet what it considers to be its total need for affordable housing, we should be seeing those figures in excess of a thousand homes. Now, several things preclude against getting there. One is that the chief delivery of affordable housing is actually through the planning system and, and, and through new development. But that's capped by what housing developers are able to achieve. And government policy says that we can't have policies that are unviable for developers to deliver. So in actual fact, um, the, the core strategy selective review, which members may recall was updated in twenty nineteen, re-looked at those figures for affordable housing need and looked at the maximum amounts that we could reasonably apply on developers. Um, and those are set out in the core strategy. They won't get us to the total housing need for affordable housing within Leeds. We will rely on these other housing streams, either the performance of registered providers, the council's own housing activities, or indeed where we actually manage to secure larger amounts of affordable housing through, um, developers such as the Guinness Partnership Trust, um, which should provide forty percent, um, of their housing at the, um, the South Bank, um, as, as at an affordable vent, which is over and above those policies. So a number of different routes to try and contribute toward that overall housing figure. I will say that, uh, officers have been working on an affordable housing delivery plan, which is due to go to development plan panel, uh, later on in the summer. Um, and that will look at bringing together a number of, um, uh, indicators, um, for performance uh, across these different routes for delivery to provide, um, a clearer overall picture of what's being delivered. Um, 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 and where the council's, um, actions and interventions could be honed, uh, and increased to aid delivery. Happy to take questions on that.
Okay, thank you, Martin. I've not had any members of the board indicating they've got questions. So while you perhaps cogitate on that, I'm going to ask, uh, oh, I will reserve my questions and defer to councillor Bentley. Jonathan?
Thank you, Chair. Um, a couple of questions, Martin, and tha- tha- thanks for, uh, the report and that, uh, summary of it. A number I was looking for, and it might be in the report and I might have just missed it. And you did, you did refer to it in terms of the pipeline. How many consents have we, have we got, um, in terms of numbers of houses? Um, which haven't started yet. They're just, they're, they're, they're just planning permissions that developers are sat on. And do we have any indication of sort of a age profile of those consents? And I'll, I'll just ask my second one whilst I'm, whilst I'm on. Could, um, you talk about affordable housing and the sources of affordable housing. And I, I, I think for city cent- centre developments now, um, uh, we're taking commutable sums, um, rather than the housing go, house, uh, flats and houses going into, um, into a registered provider. And I know from previous work I've done, that there were a number of, um, schemes we've had across the city where we've had commutable sums rather than, uh, rather than the actual, uh, property themselves. Can you tell me how that is now being, being operated? Thanks, Chair.
Martin?
Yeah, thanks for your questions, councillor Bentley. Um, so in terms of the, um, numbers of, uh, homes with permission that haven't started yet, we refer to that as outstanding capacity. Um, now that's always sat at quite a high figure in Leeds. And I think that's testament to the fact that developers, certainly when they're seeking to deliver on brownfield sites, of which over eighty percent of Leeds' housing completions are, they need quite a lot of supply within their portfolio in order to bring forward sites. So they need that certainty that they've got that pipeline of sites to be able to develop them. We're not really seeing evidence of many developers sat on sites and not bringing them forward whilst they have planning permission. Um, it's often developers who, um, sit on sites or landowners who sit on sites before they come to planning that's more of an issue for us. But that number sits at around seventeen or eighteen thousand. And that's what we, um, usefully refer to as, as forming part of our five-year housing land supply, councillor Bentley. And it's actually quite important for us to keep that figure, um, fairly robust, um, in order to defend inappropriate speculative development. In answer to the second question around the commuted sums, the, within the city centre and in order to help develop the city centre market for housing and in response to government guidance that requires flexibility for housing developers in the city centre, especially for private rented sector developers for whom government makes explicit allowances within guidance. We do accept that a commuted sum may form part of a planning application. So in the city centre, that is a route for developers. And the council has, uh, programmes in place to siphon those commuted sums into particular sites within the city centre. And a couple of those have actually come forward and forgive me, Martin Farrington will know the names of these, but they've, they've, they've escaped my mind at the moment. But elsewhere within the, um, authority, we do encourage that affordable housing is located on-site as a preference. So we should be seeing developers deliver affordable housing on-site outside of the city centre. If and where they don't, that will be because they have persuaded the council through a viability case or other outweighing material considerations.
Okay, thank, thank you for that, Martin. I think there was another component, uh, I'm going to let Jonathan come back anyway. But to councillor Bentley's, i- it was not just the overall figure of permissions that haven't been built, built out, but it was the age profile. How many of these were granted several years ago or, um, currently are up for renewal? So to give us some ideas to how long they've been outstanding rather than just the overall figure. Unless I'm wrong, Jonathan, but I think that was one of the points you were making.
It was indeed, Chair, and I, I think it's an issue we both share over time. Uh, yeah, that, that, that was, that was part of my question as well. If, if you've, I, I don't expect you to have that in your head, Martin, but it'd be a useful number to see.
Yeah, I, I, I'll certainly, for fear of getting it completely wrong, um, Chair and councillor Bentley, I, I will certainly, um, forward that um, to members after the meeting. That's, that's captured as part of our annual strategic housing land availability assessment, which, upon which we engage with the House Builders Federation, um, and those bringing forward houses in Leeds to get a snapshot of the current land supply position. So age of any permissions, um, will, is a key part of that. But I, I can, I can, um, get Matthew Brook, who, who manages that, to send that answer to you.
Hmm. Could, could I just say that one of the inquiries that we conducted as a board some years ago and that we revisit every year was on housing mix. And basically, are we building the right kind of property in the right place, the right sort of tenure and affordability? And that's subject to the board's later potential approval of the work programme. This would be a component that could be reported back and explored in more detail at that time. But Jonathan, is there anything you want to come back on?
No, except Chair, you, you may recall that that was a joint working group with, um, whatever the appropriate housing, uh, scrutiny board was at the time. And I, I was actually on that with you.
You were, you were indeed. And you, and I'm sure that you're happy to hear that we've still got our teeth around that particular bone.
Absolutely. I look forward to it. Thanks, Chair.
Cheers. Mohammed, Mohammed Shazan?
Uh, thank you, Chair. You've kind of echoed the point that I was actually going to make and you raised it before me, that, uh, I was wondering as far as affordable and social housing needs concern, are we actually making those houses that people actually acquire? There would be loads of one-bedroom and two-bedroom flats. But if you look at the council waiting list and, uh, the demands and the demography of, uh, the residents living in Leeds, that there's a big demand for family housing. And, uh, I don't think so we can get family housing done or it's not available at affordable or for sociable or, or rentable. So what we, uh, what's our strategy going forward to kind of get that right mix that we need? Because obviously, uh, as you can see, we are getting lots of one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments, which are okay for bachelors and those that want to enjoy life, uh, as, uh, singletons, but, uh, not for really ideal for those with families because, uh, we don't have those gardens and the, the requirements or the, uh, green areas, uh, there that they can use as a family, you see. So just if you can answer that for me, Martin, please.
Yeah, thanks, Mohammed. I will allow Martin to answer that. But that's certainly one of the elements that we, we revisit, um, every time that we look at the housing mix and the, the progress or lack of it on various elements. Martin?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Chair. Thanks, councillor Shazan. That, that, that's certainly a key consideration during the planning application process. And the affordable housing should mirror the mix that's being put forward for the wider site. So if a developer's putting forward, um, a, a, a largely family housing scheme, then the affordable housing should be a proportion of that type of houses as well. Um, we don't allow the developer to then put in what would necessarily be sort of cheaper housing, um, to, to, to make up the affordable element of that. We also look at any local housing assessment data that we have. And if there's very clear evidence that there are particular needs for particular types of housing within an area, we'll use that to have a negotiation with the developer, um, through the planning application.
Okay, thanks, Martin. In the absence of any other questions, I will now ask, well, some of them have been answered, but two questions in my own mind remain, remain outstanding. The first is this question of viability. We've always, for as long as I can remember, had this particular thorn in our side whereby developers have pleaded poverty and their inability to deliver, um, affordable housing within a particular development. That was subsequently enshrined in law by present government. And I'm just wondering, and I'm, I'm probably asking you for an impression here rather than anything that's statistically demonstrable, Martin. But how far has that handicapped our ability to deliver the fact that viability is now enshrined in law and can be quoted quite readily by developers? My second point is this issue of the proportion of affordable housing that's required across the city. You indicated that we've had lots of development in the city centre, but that the requirement is only five percent. And we've had this discussion before in terms of other locations. I mean, my own ward, for example, even though people are crying out for affordable housing, part of it in terms of development is still only designated as one where five percent of affordable housing is required. And I know again, that comes back to the question of viability. Have we revisited those percentages, which vary from five percent in some locations right through to, as you said, thirty five percent in some of the outer areas? Are, are we satisfied that that's still a robust way of dealing with the issue of section one oh six, um, affordable housing provision?
So thanks for your question, Chair. Um, yeah, viability is, is key to what the planning system is able to deliver. Because if we cannot show that the policies are viable, they will not be declared sound by an independent Because if we cannot show that the policies are viable, they will not be declared sound by an independent inspector when assessed against national guidance. Uh and affordable housing, we are told, is one of the key viability issues that developers face. Uh so our policies are necessarily in line with government guidance um restricted in, in terms of meeting full affordable housing need because of that. In terms of the percentages, there was um a S M A, Strategic Housing Market Assessment, done, which was quite a detailed piece of evidence work, which included um a, a housing survey across Leeds that was carried out in twenty seventeen. And that fed into evidence for an update to the core strategy policy, which was adopted in twenty nineteen. And you'll remember, Chair, that that core strategy policy then saw an increase of five percent of affordable houses to seven percent within the inner area and the city centre. And that was seen as being as far as we could go um at that time in terms of um the viability for those schemes with thirty-five percent in the outer areas remaining and fifteen percent um in other parts of Leeds. Now, we are obliged under law to review our plan every five years to see if it needs updating. Once we've prioritised policies for climate change within the current local plan update, which executive board approved for consultation on Wednesday, we will look again at the affordable housing question in a future review of the local plan update. Now that will also then uh capture some of the changed national guidance that's emerging um around affordable housing and delivery of the government's um ambitions for affordable homeownership. Um and uh we'll need to take all of that and any changed government guidance into account at that time alongside um local evidence as well.
Okay, thank you, Martin. So in the absence of any other questions on this tranche of K P Is, we move on to the next one, which is ten to fourteen, and basically relate to um training, education and other associated elements. Who, who's going to introduce these briefly for us?
I'm happy to give an overview, uh Chair, if that helps.
Thank, thank you, Martin.
Okay, so in terms of um number ten, that is working age Leeds residents with a, at least a level four qualification. Uh this is green with the twenty twenty twenty-one figure being forty-six point nine percent. Uh and that's for the academic year nineteen twenty. Uh if you look at that and compared to the academic year from two years prior, seventeen eighteen, it was at thirty-eight point two percent. So that is uh a sizable increase. Um that, it has increased across the whole of the UK. And that, that figure for the last twelve months has also increased in Yorkshire Humber uh by three point one percent. Um so uh the increase in Leeds uh is um it, it's important to know that it's also increasing across the UK and Yorkshire Humber, albeit in Leeds uh it is markedly higher. Um the reasons for this, you know, we can discuss further, but I think that there is a lack of uh complete clarity. Uh we, we, I think we have seen higher skilled jobs uh being one of the drivers for growth in ne- in Leeds. We have seen organisations relocating, uh government department, professional services, uh firms. Uh Channel Four is a notable example um of a high-profile organisation. Uh increase in higher levels of apprenticeships and possibly an increase in graduate retention as well. So that, that probably some of the issues in the mix and the background to that figure. Uh number eleven, uh number of people supported to improve skills, that's rated as amber. Uh the twenty twenty twenty-one target is six thousand four hundred and twenty. Um the uh current uh figure uh is four thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven, that's seventy-six percent livered uh by the end of quarter four. Uh the nineteen twenty target was seven five thousand five hundred with a result of six thousand nine hundred and twenty-one. Um with being seventy-six percent of the target, we're on two, on target to achieve by the end of the academic year. That, that target is set by the Education uh and Skills Funding Agency. Um the budget uh uh is two point two million and uh for twenty-one twenty-two, it's devolved to WIC. Um fifty-eight percent of residents on the skilled programme lived in twenty percent of the most deprived uh lower super output areas uh in the city. In terms of number twelve, uh the number of people supporting to work, that is uh red in terms of the right rating. The target for the period was four thousand two hundred and fifty. The result was three thousand four hundred and thirteen. Uh so it was eighty percent of the target achieved. Uh one thousand four hundred and eighteen residents were supported into work via job shops in the community hubs. Uh fifty-four percent of residents uh secured employment uh were from the twenty most deprived lower super output areas. Thirty-five percent identified as uh black, Asian or minority ethnic. And eleven percent had a physical disability or mental health impairment. Um I think that's a headline summary of those, councillor Trosswell.
Um I think, I don't think that takes us up to thirteen or fourteen, which have lumped together being part of education, training, et cetera.
All right, I worked on my, my summary. All the stuff to uh I don't know whether Martin Long's on, if he wants to provide a summary of those, if he's on.
He is. Martin?
Yeah, I can attempt to. I mean, that, that information's provided through um children's services rather than employment skills, which is probably why it's not in Martin's briefing. Um but just looking at the report, progress eight score is, is um has increased in Leeds in twenty twenty-one and that's um um I think in, in line with the national average, but I think there's some issues around that in terms of um impact of the pandemic and, and how we can um the, the kind of catch-up funding and things is applied as we, as we go into the next academic year. Um and the neat figures, again, there's a, there's been obviously a disproportionate impact of some of the pandemic on, on um on the neat figures in Leeds, so that's um it's increased in uh in terms of the not knowns. I, I think that there's, there's some more up-to-date data that I've got actually than, than what's in here that I can, that I could send out separately. Um but I know children's services have done quite a lot of work over the last kind of six to twelve months around changing the reporting system to, to make it more robust and accurate. And quite a lot of work that's going on at kind of West Yorkshire level to make sure that um they kind of pick up some of that joint work and issues, particularly where children might live in one uh district but go to school in another and, and can sometimes then get missed, missed in the system. Um and there's quite a lot of work that employment and skills are doing with children's services around how we can enhance that, that kind of provision to, to those, to that cohort of, of, of young people, particularly around um accessing European funding. So we're in the middle of um bidding for some funding with D E B P to, to enhance that support. And we view schemes like Kickstart and, and a number of other government schemes to make sure that that those, those young people have the right level of support in place. But um so I think that's a, a, a quick summary of, but I'm happy to try and pick up any further questions on that.
Okay, I've not had any notification of questions apart from now councillor Di.
Hi, and thank you for this. Um my first is a, a question. I'm just scrolling back on my screen to um to, to number ten, the percentage of working age residents with at least a level four qualification. Um as you said, Martin, the, the numbers are really quite interesting and the reasons behind them are probably in more interesting still that in terms of our inclusive growth agenda, then what we should be most interested in is enabling people to gain those qualifications who might not have, have, have gained them already. And so it matters actually a, a lot really, whether those numbers come from people um coming in to Leeds. So for example, people relocating for Channel Four or tech jobs or things like that, who would have had those qualifications anyway, but in a, in another part of the country, come to Leeds, bring their qualifications with them, and therefore our numbers go up. Um is, i- is to me not, you know, not a, a big win. What is a win is us supporting residents who wouldn't normally have been able to access those qualifications, to gain those qualifications and therefore, you know, the, the income that goes with them. Um but it's, it's interesting as well that there was a, a, a comment somewhere in there about the um data for other core cities. And it's, the, the trend's the same, isn't it, across all, all the core cities? So are, are people not, not moving? Are people staying? I don't know. I, I don't know what the, what the, the story behind that data is. But it is really quite interesting. So I don't know whether there is a, a further story behind, behind those numbers.
Do you, do you? Martin, Captain, as well. Perhaps if I provide some just in, initial brief comments, I'm sure Eve will have uh an insight on this as well and perhaps Martin as well. Um I, I, I think uh your, it, your comment on um other core cities, I think, is an important one, uh councillor Di. Um I think, I think over, over recent years, all core cities have benefited from what is, is, is called the process of agglomeration in terms of the concentration of those higher value jobs in the larger urban areas and how that's then impacted in terms of both job opportunities within those urban areas, but also inward migration and movement as well. And perhaps um the growth in those high-value jobs in those, in those larger cities outside of London and perhaps a, a, a less strong uh performance of it, of those jobs solely being concentrated more in London. I think there's, there has been um a, a degree of uh rebalancing to, to, to some degree in terms of people's desire to, 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 to relocate to London, partly as a consequence of uh high costs of living and, and, and corrections in the market uh there. Um and then uh certainly, I think, we, you know, a, a, at the moment, we are in a position where there's been huge amounts of dynamic change as a consequence of the uh, uh, the pandemic. So seeing how that develops going forward in terms of impacting on those, on those metrics will, will be, you know, of, of great interest, as you point out, but I don't know, Eve, whether you have any other observations you wish to make.
Yeah, thanks, Martin. So, so um the first thing to say is I just gave a little bit of a nod earlier to some work we're going to be doing to refresh our talent and skills plan. As part of that, I think this is an important piece for us to try and find ways to understand a bit more what's going on in this space. And um it's early days, but we're going to look to see if we can work with partners like O D I Leeds on that as part of that work, councillor Di, try and understand it. Um we, we, uh we're already through some of the uh programmes we deliver, trying to ensure, as Martin mentioned, that we, Martin Long mentioned, sorry, that, that we um I, I can respond to where we see the growth in jobs in, in the city. So the digital sector, for example, was limited impact. You, you know, they were hit initially by the COVID nineteen restrictions because they are, like everybody else, had to flip their workforce to home working and so on. But actually then demand increased significantly for their services because of the uptake of digital across all of the sectors, which means that there's a really significant demand for skills in that sector. But at the same time, those digital businesses can now recruit from anywhere in the UK and indeed internationally for some of those skill sets that they need that are in high demand. So um we need to make sure that some of the interventions we make allow uh people from Leeds to be able to access some of those jobs and, and make sure the interventions that we make allow for that. The positive thing about the digital sector is that they're also at the forefront of their minds, wanting to get a more diverse workforce because they tend to be um, uh you know, they tend to be uh in partic- particularly in more technical roles, having male-dominated workforce. So gender balance is one thing they need to address, but they're also interested in diversity across the board. And many of the employers that are in the digital sector in Leeds are already working with us on that, which is really positive. And we're, are actually going to be doing a piece of work in partnership across the city to map the racial um diversity of the digital sector as well. So um it, without, without doubt, it's something that we need to keep an eye on um as we refresh talent and skills plan and think about those skills pieces. But I think we also need to remember some of the data that appears about um uh you know, some of those people in our workforce who leave school with limited skills. And that there is a demand also for, to get people into uh whether it's social care, whether it's childcare, whether it's other areas that actually with support, those individuals can build skills they need to go in there. So we need to also keep our eye on building those uh, those skills as well, not just a level four, I think. So um it's probably, your questions are really, are probably a reflection of actually, we've probably not got as much data as we would like below this indicator to really understand how that's affecting the population in Leeds. And it's something that we can explore as this refresh of the talent and skills plan about how we can try and get data that might not be statistically perfect, but can give us some sense of what might be happening in the workforce in more, in more real time. Um so s- sorry, that wasn't like kind of a really specific answer, but it just sort of give you a sense of the work that Martin and myself are doing in our preparation for the, the sort of refresh of the talent and skills plan and where members might want to become involved in, in some of that work.
Thanks, Eve. Yeah, I mean, you've touched upon one of the crucial aspects of um monitoring the inclusive growth is how we quantify, how we set targets in a way that we can then map progress. But Katie, is there anything you want to come back on?
Um no, thank you. And I, I didn't really expect a, 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 an answer with any more um sort of detail behind it because, as you say, it's, it, it's a, a, a difficult thing to unpick, but it's good to hear that work's going on. And the only other thing I wanted to comment on was fourteen, the, the um neat figures are specifically the not knowns and it's good to know that work is happening around that because that's something we discussed at a, a board perhaps a year or so ago. Um that it was worrying to see the, the, the not knowns. The not knowns, to me, are, are, are more worrying than the needs because if you know the needs, you can do something with them. If you don't know them, you can't. So it's good to know that work's going on with that because I think it, 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 it had taken a bit of a dip. It, it, it was several years ago really good. And it, it, we as a city had very, very few not knowns and we had a great programme that was turning our needs into eats. So it's good to see that that's picking up again.
Thanks, Katie. It's important that we continue to flag that up. Jonathan?
Thanks, Chair. Um my question was almost identical to Katie's really, or the point I was um wanting to make was sort of unpacking that, that level four uh population number. Really, as, as we've already discussed about understanding where we were importing talent and where we were developing as ourselves within the city um and how good we were at that. And, and I, I don't need an answer to it now, Chair. I think the, the, the answers that Martin and we uh Eve gave were, were, were fine. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Jonathan. Two quick questions from me. Um some of the elements of services that have been delivered in terms of adult learning and supporting people into work are funded from European sources. And at some stage, obviously, those are going to disappear and run out. So what is the implication for that in terms of those work strands that are currently taking place? And the second point is, have we evaluated what the, what the benefits are going to be of the devolved sum relating to adult education that's going to accompany our new elected mayor?
Yeah, thank, thanks, Chair. So um responding on the funding landscape first of all. Um the, the, the funding that we have through European funding comes to an end broadly around the beginning of twenty twenty-three, although it, it may extend a little depending on how the programmes that Martin's delivering um develop. Um at the moment, we are not um clear exactly how we might replace that funding because um the Community Renewal Fund, which was launched for a sort of an initial pilot um in April, may be a source of funding for that, but it's still um to develop further. Um and we made a decision that we would not apply in the first round of community renewal funding because at this stage it wasn't something that we, we, we needed to uh secure additional funding for in relation to employment and skills because we actually are well-funded through the European money that we have and through the money that's coming through the combined authority at the moment. Um but there is, Chair, quite a bit of work for us to do to understand the landscape of funding and respond to that over the next twelve to eighteen months. And the same actually applies for business support, which is also predominantly funded by European monies. Um so there'll be quite a lot of work for officers to do in relation to that. And for any new members to the And so there'll be quite a lot of work for officers to do in relation to that. And for any new members to the scrutiny board, the Employment and Skills Service is almost one hundred percent funded by external funds. So council core budget does not um and Skills Service is funded through a mixture of sources of funding that come from um soon to be the Combined Authority and from D W P and from European funds and so on. Um so it it does mean that we need to keep a keen focus on that and responding to it. On the devolved monies from the Combined Authority, Martin, do you want to come in on that one? Because you you've been closest to the discussions of the Combined Authority around the arrangements, so.
Yeah, of course. Yeah. So um at the moment, the agreement with um because of the the kind of speed at which it came in, the the funding has almost been passed forward for next year. So we we get the same amount of money for the same kinds of priorities as we do currently into the next academic year. Um and we're in the middle of discussions with with the Combined Authority at the moment around how we can potentially extend and build on that and 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 make sure that we um as a region are kind of working to to develop the best outcomes to people. But we're quite keen that um, you know, we we push that community learning aspect of it in terms of you coming back to the point around the level four qualifications, we've we've got about a quarter of Leeds that don't have a level two qualification at the moment, and that is the source of funding that predominantly gets those people into the entry level qualifications of one and two. And if we don't have that funding, we're not going to have the kind of future level three, four people to take those jobs in the future. So so it's 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 quite a um kind of big priority for us at the moment, but um we're kind of working with the Combined Authority to make sure that we kind of secure and look at how we can enhance that funding. Uh so it's it's kind of a bit early doors in terms of how that's going to pan out at the moment, because obviously next year has just been passported. But I I think by September, October time, we'll have a much better position of how that's how that's looking.
Okay, thank you, Martin. If no one's got anything else to add to that, I'm not adding the indication of any other questions from members. So we'll move on to um K P I fifteen, uh which falls into two groups. One, the number of people killed or seriously injured in road traffic collisions. And the second one is more specifically drilling down into a number of young people who are uh killed um and seriously injured. Um I don't think we have Gary, but we do have Paul Foster. Paul, are you going to lead on this one?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um it is the the K P I.
Yes, fifteen, number of people killed and seriously injured, and also the young people as a important subsection of that.
So um but both these uh figures are obviously with the the pandemic and the reduction in travel. We do see that um the K S I numbers uh reflect that and follow a very similar trend to the to the traffic volumes that we've seen on the road. So obviously um in the last couple of months, there has been a, you know, a a return of of those numbers. I think we've historically um seen before that sort of the two thousand sixteen to two thousand and nineteen sort of numbers. We've we've seen a a flattening of this this number and we've not been able to reduce that significantly. Um and I think there is a there's work to go and and obviously this board um looks separately at an item on this particular issue on road safety in general, doesn't it? And we 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 bring the police in. And I think at that point, we need to consider how Vision Zero can be implemented and how we can start to make a real impact in in this area. I think we um leave it at that now, Chair, in terms of the 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 detail that members can see. I don't think this is this is sort of a, you know, we can't take anything really from the numbers in terms of claiming that performance is is because of interventions of ourselves. It's it's down to the reduction of um of general traffic across the area. We continue to do all the programmes that we have uh in terms of education um and road safety and continue to do those measures. But generally, it's the it's the traffic levels that that dictate um the K S I on the road, both both the um the the overall numbers and those with the 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 child uh levels.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Uh I I'm quite happy for members of the board to ask any questions. Uh and I noticed that that Jonathan Taylor's coming on these K S Is. I think, subject again to the approval later on the agenda of our specific inquiry focus in the coming year, we can do a lot more work on this and obviously involve partners who we've met with before. But also, I think the key element that the board was proposing from last year and that I hope will be taken up this year is to include community road safety campaigners, so we've got their input into that inquiry. Um Jonathan?
Uh thank you, Chair. For that reason, I don't intend to go into any sort of great detail with questioning here. Um I think it is just a a a need, I feel, to reiterate that we don't use or we do we take into account these figures, but you know, we do have to bear in mind the traffic levels have been significantly lowered. Um and I find highways is is one of the areas that is so heavily reliant on data that having these figures, which are, you know, arguably artificial in turn in the sort of wider uh traffic um area um makes unattainable um. Paul knows what I'm trying to say. I'm trying to say it's so difficult to get any sort of um traffic management or speed reduction um or anything at all like that, because the data is uh or the thresholds that they use on the data are so high um that these figures bringing them down artificially, uh because there's been so uh such a reduction in traffic levels um is going to do a disservice to our area. Um I've kind of muddled myself all up there, Chair, but I think the point uh that I've regularly made on this board um there. But I don't intend to go into any any further detail, given the inquiry that we're hoping to prove uh today, is going to be going forward uh this year. Thanks.
Yeah, indeed, Jonathan. You have raised the issue on behalf of your constituents and road safety campaigners more generally. As we all have, I mean, basically, for those who are new members, we have always been exercised year on year by these figures. And the fact that the K S I figure has remained stubbornly high and in some cases even grown. And the difference between the figure of actual K S Is and the targets has grown and grown and grown, which is the reason why we decided a full inquiry. Normally, each year we have at least one session after this one with the police and other partners to go through, but we decided we needed to drill down much more deeply. And the only reason we haven't done that so far was simply the logistics of dealing with it through the co- the 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 pandemic period, um which is now something I think we can do. Katie?
Uh yeah, just a a quick request. When we do come back to this in more detail, can we look at the impact of the school streets initiative and 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 see if that's had any influence as well?
Yeah, I think that that's an important component. And uh the 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 other point arising from what Jonathan said a few minutes ago is that hopefully Vision Zero, in order to be worth the paper it's printed on, has got to start addressing some of those shortcomings in the current process that we all as ward members identify in terms of the threshold for getting traffic calm in and crossings being so high. It just makes it very difficult to address some of the issues in our own community. So hopefully, Vision Zero now gives us the opportunity to start being much more robust in terms of how we approach those those previous shortcomings that we've we've addressed from our own experiences as ward members. Um Martin and then then Helen?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It was just in relation to 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 these figures. And I I mean, I get the um the fatality reports of being in the city. With regard to fatalities, they're nearly in all circumstances the consequence of negligent driving, um criminal behaviour, all that kind of activity. I I think when you have the further session, I think it will be very interesting to to look at the unique circumstances that the pandemic has given rise to and how the extent to which that shows that correlation between traffic volumes and accidents. And you know, I think the unusual and unprecedented circumstances that we face may give some rise to some pointers in terms of how we can address those stubborn issues that 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 you touched on, Chair. So I think it it does create an opportunity to look at 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 these figures to try and find some uh potential opportunities that we can do and 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 address the issues.
Yeah, absolutely. And and hopefully, we can exercise some downward pressure on the figures and take advantage of the opportunity that they have diminished over the 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 previous period. Helen?
Thank you. Just minded the mood. Your son. Yeah, it's sorry, I'm getting an echo.
Yeah, we've got quite an echo on your your audio.
Right, I I don't know why. Yeah.
You need to get you need to go back to using these.
That's better. That sounds better. Um it was just to to pick up on um what councillor Die um said about school streets and um and I put into that the active travel neighbourhoods as well. Um and that um we are conducting a a review of um and going back to consult with people on both of those initiatives that came out of the pandemic, um otherwise especially the active travel neighbourhoods. Obviously, the data will be slightly skewed by um the January, February lockdown. Um in particular, when the 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 kids weren't at school. But we are going to look very and we're expanding the number of school streets as well. So the number of schools that have got um will have school streets. So we'll keep scrutiny updated with the data that comes from that. And there's a review of the active travel neighbourhoods and a and again, going out to consult consultation about um um increasing the number of active travel neighbourhoods. Um and that's those two initiatives should help really for those kind of um because we want to get the Vision Zero, but it's the the injuries that are caused by um kind of outside schools or, you know, in kids play trying to play in outside their homes. Um I don't know whether Paul wants me to correct me on any of that, but um yeah, we are um very much reviewing both of those schemes. So just to pick up on that. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that. Very much for that, Helen. I think the next meeting, we will be looking at the terms of reference of our inquiry. But basically, I think we want them to be empowering and those terms of reference to allow us to touch on every single element that contributes positively or negatively to 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 road safety and and to diminishing the K S I figures, which, as I say, have been a source of concern to us for many, many years. Okay, I don't think I've got any other uh members indicating that they want to contribute on this. So moving on to sixteen, seventeen and eighteen, all relating to transport services, number of passengers using bus services, which again, obviously is another area where there's been a reduction in the figures due to the pandemic. Um and also the the number of people using sustainable travel. But again, that's been militated against by by Covid. So I don't know if anyone just wants to quickly chip in on those. Don't all shout at once.
I think I think I think, Chair, yeah, they obviously the the Combined Authority um do the the annual tracker survey. I think that, you know, that it does reflect that there's a there's a a dip in twenty twenty. Um again, is that the difference in terms of people's travel and travel behaviour? And I think I think being able to draw any firm conclusions from that i- is probably quite difficult uh in the circumstances, you know, given social distancing, the reduction in frequency of some services, uh capacities, et cetera, and the messaging around use uh avoiding the use of public transport has probably started to reflect in that uh perception survey.
Okay, thanks very much. And the um the the city's transport strategy is something that we we revisit anyway as a separate item over the course of the year. And clearly, there's some of the factors that we can pick up there. We also did an inquiry some years ago on bus service uh improvements. And again, we can revisit some of the elements relating to that in due course. Okay, that takes us on to the sort of miscellany at the end of this report of uh of flood risk in residential and commercial properties. And again, we've got a corporate duty. Oh, sorry, Neil. Sorry. Yeah, you you slipped that hand up while I was in the middle of my uh attempt to move us on. Go on.
Um I just wanted to come in briefly on um specifically on on page fifty one, sixty or fifteen. Because I think you mentioned a few minutes ago that um things have to be um I think your phrase is worth a type of a written on. But I just wanted to to comment on on the quality of um some of the data. Um on sixteen, the annual tracker survey, the number of respondents from Leeds was three hundred. So that's three hundred people out of three quarters of a billion. And I think uh almost by definition, that then becomes a self-delecting different group of people who almost all want to make similar points. I think that's the first point I'd make. But then um possibly more importantly, um on on seventeen and the number of passengers on the buses, obviously, we all agree that things have changed in such a way that the previous figures are completely outdated. But this is the point I'm making, but the um the L P TIP target um from twenty sixteen is still written in reports. They're still saying that we want to double patronage from the figures in that year, sixty seven million to one hundred and thirty four million. And at the time, I think most of us thought it was worth having a target, and that was a pretty heroic target, to be honest, but maybe it may be achievable. Now, of course, the world is totally different. And actually keeping that in the report renders the whole thing meaningless, because uh it it needs to be revised. And and just just finally, on the same theme, obviously, um as some members know, I sit on the Transport Committee. And we obviously want to work as closely as possible with the new mayor. And she'll have lots of responsibility for buses and trains and all sorts. But in order to do this, we need to, in my view, start from figures which are realistic and not be hamstrung by these previous um previous figures. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thanks, Neil. I think I think every meeting when we've discussed this, either in the context of the K P I's or bus service provision, we've made that point about how difficult it would be to achieve that target. And now, obviously, given the fact that things have slipped back during the pandemic, makes it even more difficult. And I think that's a point that I'm sure will be revisited. But I don't know if there's anyone on the call at official level who can comment on that, whether that figure is going to be reviewed so that it looks less unrealistic.
I think I think, Chair, we have been reflecting on exactly the points that uh councillor Buckley makes. I guess the 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 al- the alternative view that that's given is is with the climate emergency and the carbon targets that we've also set ourselves as a city, um we do really need to achieve that level. So there's a it 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 is even more difficult to do, and we accept that. But I think there is a a need to move towards that level of um public transport patronage to reap to get anywhere near our uh net zero targets for twenty thirty. So there's a there's an alignment with other strategies that that is necessary. Um and maybe highlights the work that increasing work that we're going to need to do to put into with, as you say, with the mayor around how we improve bus services and make them something that many more people in the city want to use.
Yeah, I mean, I think the point that members have made, it's not a political point because it's right across the board, is that if you have a figure that is unattainable and unachievable, it kind of diminishes the credibility of the process. I mean, the figure in two thousand and sixteen was sixty seven million. The figure prior to the onset of the pandemic was sixty seven point four million. Now, at some stage, we've got to say that even though we might want to achieve the level, and I do agree, it has to factor into other uh policies. It needs to be a credible one um that doesn't invite derision by, you know, right-thinking commentators and and observers. But I'm sure that that is something that is being picked up. Okay, um Martin, I think you just wanted to chip in, did you?
Yeah, it was just in the context of that. I mean, we can take that those coins away, um councillor Trussell, that that that's helpful feedback. I I I think we are in a very dynamic situation in terms of obviously the impact of the pandemic, which is clearly shown on those figures. But then also, um there's been a huge amount of work that has been undertaken over the last twelve months, particularly with the Leeds Public Transport Improvement Programme that that was one of the drivers behind those increased forecasts. Um Sturtton Park and Ride is due to open in September as a major new Sturtton Park and Ride is due to open in September as a major new piece of transport infrastructure. We are finalising the extension of Temple Green Park and Ride. We've extended Ellen Road Park and Ride. The bus enhancement proposals, a number of routes are in the process of being finalised. The hedgerow has just been finalised, the hedgerow on Eastgate is an example. So I think there is a position of coming back out of lockdown, understanding how that position in terms of people returning to work will impact on those figures, how those measures will impact those figures as well. And then the review and, as you outlined, Chair. So I think there's a lot, there's a lot of factors to consider in reviewing that point.
Okay, thanks, Martin. Paul Wadsworth.
It was just very quickly to come back to the figures that councillor Buckley makes. And I totally support what he says. And the other thing is that regarding what Paul Foster says, with regarding achieving those figures, if we look at the return to work and Martin touches very briefly on the return to work, the return to work doesn't look like it's going to be five days a week. So ultimately, those figures are not going to be achieved whether we travel by bus, by car, by motorcycle, because we're not going to be coming. We're going to be staying at home. If you just look at the prospects for the council, that's two or three days a week in the office and the rest of the time at home. That looks like where employers are going, certainly big employers in big cities are going in that route. It does give us some challenges in other areas, I accept. But on bus patronage, if people aren't coming into the city centre, they're not going to add to the figures. So those passengers are not going to be there. And I think we just need to accept that as soon as possible. And then we can move on to see what we're going to do about services, et cetera.
Thanks, Paul. Martin.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I mean, councillor Wadsworth makes an important point there. I think my own reflections on that, in terms of the impact of the pandemic, is I think as we finally unlock and people think about that they're changing work patterns with their employers, I think there'll be a lot of intentions at this moment in time. And I think councillor Wadsworth is absolutely right, that there'll be people that will work either at home the majority of the time or certainly a greater proportion of the time than they used to. I think, I think within that, my own view is it's probably around autumn 2022, once people have made the return that they expect, understood whether it works and to what extent, gone on holiday and then readjusted, that will probably know what the people's permanent intentions are. So I think it is a very dynamic situation. I think it won't be as it was. But quite how it's going to have changed in the long term, I think we're probably about 15 months away from fully understanding that, if it helps.
Okay, thanks, Martin. I'm now going to make a third attempt to move us on to the final tranche of miscellaneous KPIs relating to flooding, devolution and the LEAP. I don't know if anyone wants to make any comments on these. And then I'll invite members' questions if they've got any.
I could comment on the flood one if it helps, councillor Trusswell, which is, I mean, members will know that we have a lot of activity on the ground at the moment. We are well into the delivery of flood alleviation scheme one as the first phase of that, which delivers one in 100 protection from the area north of Leeds Station through to Appleley Bridge on the Bradford side of the border. And we have recently got planning consent for the second phase of that, which provides flood attenuation storage as well. And secured the planning consent from Bradford for the Appleley Bridge element of those works. So those works are progressing and due to complete by the middle of 2023. And then, in addition to that, we're progressing the natural flood management works, which are predominantly north of Leeds and go right up into the Orchard Dales towards Malham. Last year, we planted, we facilitated the planting of about 300,000 trees as part of those works. And there'll be an extensive tree planting programme for the next 12-month period. But that will commence in earnest when the planting season arrives later in the year. And we're also on site with the Otley flood alleviation scheme as well. That is also now progressing. So there's a lot of work underway in that regard, councillor Trusswell.
Okay, thank you, Martin. And I just remind members that we do have a corporate responsibility to look at the flood risk management plan. And that is in our work programme for the coming year, over which we have no control or discretion. Okay, so no questions or comments on that. I don't know if anyone's got any questions or comments on 20 and 21, devolution and LEAP. If not, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And I just note that we've been going 96 minutes. And if we'd have been physically meeting in the civic hall, we would have had to stop after 90 minutes and take a break while everything was cleansed. So I think it was very wise that we decided to continue online consultative meetings. Right, okay, that brings us on to agenda item five, which is the connecting Leeds consultation update. This might seem a bit bitty, a bit patchy for new members, but we can reassure you that we have had sight of the strategy document and that this particular agenda item arises from a request by the board to get a report back on the consultation that was being undertaken. So Finn, are you introducing this?
Yes, good afternoon, Chair. Hello, everybody. I think we've got Paul Foster as well. But just in terms of introductions, my name's Finn Campbell. I'm the team leader of forward planning. And I sort of look after the strategy development on a day-to-day basis. So just to provide a brief overview of the report that's been submitted under attached appendix, the report seeks to update the board following the consultation undertaken at the start of this year on the transport strategy and outline our next steps as well in terms of both the strategy development and the development of an action plan detailing the measures we're going to take through. I think you all will have seen the report. I think just to pull out some high-level numbers, the consultation found that the overall sentiment towards the strategy was largely positive, around 68%, with 12% neutral and then 20% either negative or mostly negative. This level of sentiment was sort of reflected when we were asking and speaking to people in relation to the objectives and also the targets, which were considered both to be ambitious and a high level of agreement as well. Just to flag up, we've broken down sort of the other responses received in relation to those questions, looking at why people found the objectives and targets to be maybe unambitious or very unambitious or didn't know. And I think the report just pulls out just some sort of key reasons behind that rationale. So I think there was concern around the economic impact of the transport strategy and the need to ensure the city's economy thrives. There was a strand of feedback around personal choice and allowing everybody to have a choice in how they travel as well. And there's a further point around the needs of disability and accessibility as well. I think, looking a little bit more broadly, in terms of overall feedback, I think the priorities that have come out of the consultation are looking at public transport and creating healthier streets, spaces and communities. And that didn't just come out of sort of the commonplace web patient engagement we did. That came out from the webinars and the community committees we held with yourselves as well. Just looking further forward, I think there was agreement that more needs to be done in terms of carbon reduction from transport going forward. And a range of measures can be brought forward. I think in terms of what we can do as a council, people are keen to see that investment in the public transport network around sort of bus network and transport costs as well. In terms of next steps, we're looking to update the transport strategy document as well. There's three sort of key areas of flag that we're looking to do that update on. It's around disability and accessibility, putting the needs of those with a disability at the forefront of the strategy and ensure that all the policies and infrastructure we adopt going forward really embed and prioritise that as a first point of call, the needs of those. Second point, just around defining the role motorcycles in the city, what role they can play in terms of congestion management, but also what provision they need as well. And sort of a third and final areas around rural transport as well. And recognising the needs of rural communities does differ from urban communities and meeting the challenges of providing services and infrastructure in that will be slightly different to urban areas. Alongside that, we're developing an action plan at this moment in time that will cover 2021 to 2024. And it'll look at how we're going to enact and bring forward our ambition within the strategy. That's under development at this moment in time and will be aligned with the KPIs, some of which we've just been discussing this meeting. I think the last couple of points, just to flag, I think there's ongoing considerations. And I think we've just discussed in length sort of around the vision zero strategy and the need to develop that and sort of managing the impact of Covid and how that will affect our targets. And also, how does that, how are people travelling now in the city? And I think like this last discussion item, we don't have the answers definitively to that at this moment in time, but it's something we need to monitor and reassess how we take the strategy forward and move that. Maybe the final point just there is the key to collaborative working with the combined authority and the new elected mayor, especially on public transport and the bus network. And that's really going to be a key action taken forward within the strategy document. So I hope that gave a brief overview of the paper. And I don't know, Paul, you wanted to add anything further?
No, I think you've covered that well, Finn. And we'll take questions and comments as necessary.
Okay, thank you, Finn. And my apologies, I should have asked you to introduce yourself at the beginning and your role as, I think I've got now, team leader at City Development. Also, welcome to Gillian, who is attending for this item. Gillian, do you want to introduce yourself?
Hello, councillor Trusswell, Chair and panel. I am actually here for item six, the motorcycle trial. So I'll leave this one to Paul and Finn. But we do have Kate Morris on the call as well, who is the new head of transport planning. Perhaps it would be worth Kate introducing herself at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, councillors. So as Gillian said, my name's Kate Morris. I'm kind of four weeks now into the role. So I will obviously be taking any of the comments back and working with my team going forward.
Okay, right. So I've got Jonathan with questions and comments, followed by Neil. Jonathan.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Finn, for introducing the report. I think what is of a common sort of concern is the level of engagement with these consultations. I think saying 68% of people find the plans favourable when 1,700 people have responded out of the city is, should be a source of concern really. I think particularly when the majority of this has been done on the commonplace website, it's been done on webinars, it's online, when I'd probably expect that a majority of elderly people don't have access to that type of consultation and therefore their voices aren't being heard. And I think particularly in, you've mentioned rural and urban areas, but I think particularly in the suburban areas where a car is the main source of being able to get from one place to another, and particularly so for elderly people. I think we're going to miss their voices. So can you tell me of the respondents where they've been? I mean, I expect you to have the information to hand now, but if you could update the board on eventually where the respondents mostly came from and if they have left their age demographics as well. Because I think that should be also a source of how we consider transport going forward. Thank you.
I think councillor Taylor, just to come back maybe on your points, I'll get you the information on the age and the geographic spread of the respondents as well. I think just to flag, when we were doing the consultation, copies of the strategy, including the questionnaire and a free poster envelope were made available so that people without access to computers in the special way could access that. And that was either via an email or a dedicated phone line as well. And so we managed to send out, I think, 10 or 12, I think in total, of those documents to those communities who may not have access to digital platform. I think as well, we had some dedicated focus groups with leads involving people to help us go that extra mile and reach these harder seldom-held groups. And those people who are not necessarily would respond to the online consultation. So I think we have tried our best, given the circumstances at the start of the year, to address those points. But I'm happy to bring back the two points you've identified.
Jonathan.
Yeah, thank you. I don't want to preempt what the information will come back with on demographics. But I would just say, you've mentioned the circumstances. And I'm not in any way suggesting that this is, you know, anybody's fault or anything like that. But if this is what we're going to be looking at as the blueprint of how transport is going to be mapped out going forward, then I do think a further look needs to be taken because it is a low number of people responding. And again, without preempting what's coming back, I do expect it's not representative of the people who live particularly in the outer areas.
Thank you. Neil.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be fairly brief actually, just a couple of comments, if I may. Leeds is to be a city where you don't need a car. Well, I think as councillor Taylor has just said, Jonathan, but it sounds a little bit more like Leeds is going to be a city centre where you don't need a car. Because anything two, three, four, five miles out, and if I was to try to travel from my ward in All Woodley to Jonathan's ward in Horstford, you can't do it. There is no way of getting there except by taking a car. Second point, interestingly, on page 59, all part of the survey figures, residents strongly agreed that more needed to be done to reduce carbon emissions from transport. 81% said that. But when they were asked whether they were willing to actually do something to change in order to achieve this target, the figure went down to 58%. And I think that's human nature. There's also a reference to the collapse in bus travel and rail travel and so on. But I think Jonathan, councillor Taylor is absolutely right. I think we need to just work out what we are achieving here. Because if you're not going to be able to get in to the city centre from the outer areas, realistically, by not being able to use a car, I'm not quite sure we're on the right track.
Okay, thanks, Neil. He was going to respond to that.
So I think, maybe I'll start with that. I think we accept that with the vision statement that you pull together, there's going to be, you know, it's about the essence of what we want to try and achieve across the city. I think it will be, as councillor Buckley says, much easier to do that in the city centre where we already have the density of population, the proximity of facilities, et cetera, and the high frequency and high accessibility by public transport. But I think that point that you can't currently easily travel between wards in the outer area other than by using a car is surely something that we need to strive to solve. Those people who are not lucky enough or able to have access to a car are left very isolated by that type of transport system. And I think what we're trying to do is not penalise the car, but give people alternatives for every journey that they want to do. And we need to strive to do that. And we know that it is a challenge and an ambitious strategy to bring forward and we'll be able to do it in some places easier than others. But what definitely came out from the consultation and definitely from the the community committees that we had in all of your wards was that the current status quo and the current level of transport provision wasn't good enough and that we needed to make a change and make it better. So So I think there's things in this strategy that start to do that and, and show that that is necessary. And I hope that is what we were trying to reflect in that, in that vision statement, is to give people an alternative and everyone an alternative.
Neil, do you want to come back?
No, I'll leave it at that, Chair. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I mean, just to interject before I bring in Helen and Katie, again, the inquiry we did a few years ago into advancing bus services, I think there was unanimity, and I think there's unanimity across the council, that things can't continue as they've been since nineteen eighty six and bus services were deregulated. And I think there's strong all party support for bus franchising to make bus operators much more accountable to their passengers, to communities and to their elected representatives like us, because the keys to bus transport, public transport, reliability, affordability, and as we've just said, connectivity and what's tended to happen, and I think that this is one of the themes that's come out of the consultation, as I see, is that the operation of buses increasingly on profitable corridors has reduced a lot of the connectivity that you were referring to, Neil, in respect of, you know, getting from A to B within the city. Okay, Helen?
Thank you, Chair. Oh, am I echoing again? I just want to, oh, I am. Chair, do, yeah. So just a couple of responses there. Firstly, to councillor Buckley's comment, we, and I'll echo what you've just said there, Chair, and what Paul, Paul said as well. We don't want the status quo. We don't want it that you can't get from All Woodley to Horstford without using a car. The very fact is, this is a strategy for the future and this is our vision that you, there will be alternative uses of transport. You know, there are people who don't have a car and especially in, you know, our more deprived areas, when up to seventy percent of people don't have access to a car, we need to make it that you, we live in a city, and not just a city centre, but we live in a city where you don't need to have a car. And there's lots of, lots of work coming forward on the A sixty four corridor and different parts of the city, not just in the city centre, to make that, make that possible. And innovative with, in East Leeds, we're trialling a kind of call for bus, mini bus service, so that it will have enhanced that connectivity around East Leeds. And hopefully, if that works, then we can expand it out to the rest of Leeds. On the point of the consultation, I don't know when, how many people have responded to a highways consultation in the past, when we could do face to face and things like that. But actually, and Paul and Finn will correct me if I'm wrong, the numbers of people are actually much, much higher that responded than consultations in the past. Yes, it's challenging all being on digital. I, I don't, you know, I think it would be disservice to my parents in their seventies to say that older people don't go online, because I kind of wish that my dad would stay off Facebook, but they are, you know, they are far more digitally aware and enabled than some of our younger, more deprived citizens. So it'll be interesting to see that demographic breakdown, but I, I wouldn't make assumptions about older people would be my, my response to that. But I, from what I've been told, actually, the number of responses is to this highway strategy, highways consultation, is much, much higher than it has been in the past.
Yeah, thanks, Helen. I, I think there is a tendency amongst us as human beings, especially Leeds human beings, when we see something that's aspirational and strategic and has lots of pious commitments, to just nod our heads sagely and say, we'll believe it when we see it. And I think it's very difficult to get round that natural human instinct, but thanks for that. Katie?
Yep, I think some of my points have been said, I'm just looking at the ones I wrote down, picking up on what Paul said in one of the responses, things aren't, aren't good enough at the moment. And I think it's absolutely right that we have had this look and continue to do so, because we need to get it right. And it, it's not acceptable that people need cars. It, it isn't just in the outer areas that they need them. I think Helen just made the same point about East Leeds, that, you know, it's, it's okay to get a journey from one part of East Leeds into the city centre, the transport links are pretty good for that. But if you want to get from one part of East Leeds to another part of East Leeds, going round the, the outside, then the links just aren't there. And so we definitely need to look at that. And as you said, Helen, there are plenty of people who don't have access to a car and are reliant on public transport. So we absolutely have to get it right. For me, the biggest reason we have to get it right is, is the climate agenda. You know, we, we have to really radically look at the way we're transporting people around this city. There are some great examples from other cities around the world who do get it right and do get people out of cars. So yes, let's look at it, let's be ambitious and let's transform the way we move people around.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that as a comment, Katie, rather than, rather than as a question. But I think that's absolutely right. And, and the climate element has got to be at the forefront and a long term part of the strategy, but also inclusive growth in terms of, going back to the point we've already made, connectivity between people and jobs, and also road safety, because as we've seen, fewer cars on the road, fewer care signs. Mohammed?
Thank you, Chair. The point that was raised at our community committee, which Paul was also aware of, we don't have connectivity to our unconstitution, like the hospitals or the universities and the employment hubs. And that's something that we definitely need to look at. And a lot of the elderly people in my ward, excuse me, I've got a dry throat there, apologies, Chair. A lot of people in my ward want to access the hospitals, whether that be St James's Hospital or the LGI, there is no direct way of getting there. On occasions, they have to use two buses. Therefore, the only alternative they have, they would probably not have a car for the, otherwise, is mainly to attend their hospital appointments. So is there something that we can look at where we can actually get the connectivity to the hospitals, to the universities, to the colleges a lot better, which would then stop the need for people wanting to purchase a vehicle to attend, to, to attend the hospitals or to make, make the journey to, to the university to drop off their children, because there would be better connectivity.
Thank you, Mohammed. Paul?
Yeah, I think these are absolutely the, the types of services that we, we want to introduce. I think, you know, a lot of our focus has been on building infrastructure to make the highway network more efficient for public transport, safer for walking and cycling on. But obviously, working with the combined authority, we also need to look at the services that run on there and how they're provided. There is some work being done on, sort of, I can't remember the working title for it, but I think we were calling it a door to door hub service, which does exactly that, which looks at picking up some of those non urgent healthcare appointments and providing transport for that. So I'll, I'll dig out some details of that and, and send them across to you, councillor.
Okay, thanks, Paul. I've got no other indications at this point, so we'll thank the officers who have attended for this item and responded to our questions. And also, I think we need to say that this is an issue that we will be revisiting subject, and I keep saying this, to the approval of the work programme over the course of the next year in various guises. So thank you very much. Okay, that takes us on to agenda item six on page seventy one, the motorcycle bus lane trial. And before asking Gillian, I don't think we've got David here, I think we've got Vivian to introduce this item, just by way of background for the public and for new members of the board, this has been a long running item for the board. It was referred to as by the Motorcycle Action Group some time ago. And I think all members, I certainly got Becky to circulate the response to the report and this item that came from the Motorcycle Action Group. I think it's fair to say that when we first discussed this item, in principle, the board was sympathetic towards the idea of promoting motorcycling as a much more environmentally friendly powered form of transport. However, as we found and as the report highlights, it's been very difficult to translate that in principle support into practice. And I think the starting point was to try and identify a section of, of bus lane that could be used as a trial. However, we've now found that the identified trial route is the subject of objections from local ward members in Kirkstall, which obviously I think we need as board members and fellow members of council to take into account. I think the other great obstacle is that from the report and our discussions, it's clear that no one bus lane is representative. So if we have a trial, the results are only applicable probably to that section of bus lane. And that is very, very, you know, difficult. So I think we almost have to look at it on a case by case basis. But today's report is about whether we go ahead with the, or we, we recommend, because obviously we don't have executive powers as a scrutiny board, some people, including Mag, seem to think that we take the decision and that we sign this off. And then, and the fact is, we don't, we can only make recommendations to the officers, to the executive board member and to executive board if necessary on these things. So we have three options before us, to go ahead despite the objections with the, the A sixty five, to look at another option, which again is something that, that Mag have indicated as a possibility, or to, you know, completely review whether we can support the idea of motorcycles using bus lanes. So with that, if the officers would like to introduce the report, please assume that members have read it. So just highlight those elements of it that you feel are appropriate for our, our specific attention.
Thank you, Chair. I think you've, you've done my job for me in reality. I think you've, you've just introduced the report very well. Perhaps the only element I will add then is that after the last scrutiny, we did go away, we looked at nine corridors, including the A sixty five, and had at that stage decided that the A sixty five was the preferable corridor due to the, the width of it. It was, it is the only corridor, we have bus lane corridor of that width. The majority of it's four and a half metres wide, it narrows down to four metres in places. So, so that was the purpose of us pursuing the A sixty five, A sixty five as the trial proposal. But as you, as you say, is it a trial if it's only applicable to wide, wide bus lanes? The consultation was with Little London and Woodhouse members and Kirkstall Ward members. The concerns that the Kirkstall Ward members as a collective raised were about cyclist safety, about the purpose of the trial as well, in terms of the fact that it wouldn't, it wouldn't move to any other corridor. So since we did decide on the A sixty five, we have had some changes to policy and the position that we're in. We've got the draft transport strategy that you've just heard about, promoting our climate emergency in terms of public transport use and active travel. We have the publication of Local Transport Note one twenty, which is about cycling infrastructure, which does caution against mixing cyclists with motorcyclists in bus lanes. We have the National Bus Strategy and of course the mayoral combined authority. So I think in terms of our recommendations, we, we're looking at suggestions to review an alternative option, but the only alternative option at this moment that we are proposing would be on the A six four seven, but not at the present time. We've got the LP tip works that we are, are underway on the A six four seven, that changed the HOV lane that was previously there into a bus lane, and those orders have gone through. We need to complete that scheme, which will be another twelve months' time, and then we would like to review how that operates for the buses, which again would be a further twelve months. So we're suggesting if that option is decided, it would be in two years' time and not immediately. And the alternative is to withdraw the proposal and just to keep, keep it, certainly review when we get other bus infrastructure. But I think for narrow, narrower bus lanes, we definitely need a segregated cycle provision alongside, so that we're not promoting the mixing of, of buses cycling and motorcycles in a bus lane. And, and I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gillian. Do any of the other offices present for this item want to chip in anything? Don't feel you have to. Okay, Jonathan?
Thank you, Chair. I, I'm, I'm kind of mixed about seeing this coming back, because I had hopes that we'd made, we would have been able to make some progress here. It is a long time since this, since this came to us. I have to say, my, my instinct is always to, to kind of go along with what ward members think, because we are the ones, you know, we've usually got our fingers on the pulse about what's happening in our areas and represent the views broadly of, of what people in the area think. However, this is, this is proposed as a trial and the report states that there's, further down, I think it was point twenty four, there's a lack of support for a trial on A sixty five. I don't actually think that that's true. There, there is wide consultation and engagement that's taken place with users of, of bus lanes. At the cycle forum, it says at point thirteen, the Hackney carriage operators, bus, bus operators, accessibility groups and the emergency services have not objected. And I do think that that does also need to be taken into consideration. Looking at what the, what Kirkstall members have said, mixed evidence from existing trials. I think I read in the, in the Mag email that there's, that Leeds stands out as an anomaly and that elsewhere in West Yorkshire, motorcycles are able to, to enter bus lanes. And I, I do think that this is something we should, we should be looking at, exploring in Leeds. The, the further point, I think at point seventeen, states that the A sixty five is the only bus lane that I think can accommodate this at the moment, which is why it was deemed as the most appropriate, and then couldn't be transferred onto other bus lanes. But we are looking to expand bus lanes and bus provisions throughout the city. And I think that this trial would offer us an opportunity to see if going from four metres to four point five metres, if we're introducing bus lanes elsewhere, it is something that should be considered. It may work, this trial, or it may be deemed unsuitable, but we do, I think, have to encourage the administration to go along with it, just to see if, if it's something that is going to affect future policy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Before I ask offices to respond, there is one particular point that Jonathan did make about the comparison Mag have made with other West Yorkshire authorities. My recollection from previous reports is that it's not quite as clear cut as that and that some authorities, having embarked upon trials, have either rescinded them. So could we have a little bit more detail? And I, I apologize from the chair, I really ought to have requested that this report reiterated some of that background regarding other West Yorkshire authorities. So could we answer that as well as the other points that councillor Taylor has made? Gillian, is that you?
I'll, I'll, I'll start it, thank you. And then perhaps Vivian might wish to come in after me. So in terms of the West Yorkshire situation, we, we do know that Wakefield agreed to be a pilot and they established access to one bus lane, which was Dewsbury Road inbound in twenty sixteen, and, and that is permanent at that, at that location. However, they haven't expanded any further access to bus lanes since that trial. Bradford have established a trial of motorcycle access to a newly installed section of inbound bus lane on Hallings. Calderdale, we do believe, we have, we need, we haven't had full confirmation from Calderdale, but we do believe they have allowed some level of access to bus lanes. That might be the A six two nine, but we do need that to be confirmed from them. And we don't believe that Kirklees has yet introduced any motorcycle access to bus, bus lanes. I, I do think the issue we're making, we're not trying to suggest that Leeds is, is, is absolutely against motorcycle access in bus lanes. I think we are just saying that we want to make sure that the location that we identify is the most appropriate. And, you know, we certainly don't want to, to introduce a trial that, that is going to be unsuccessful.
And, you know, we, we certainly don't want to, to introduce a trial that um, that is going to be unsuccessful. Um, I think the trial that we would like to introduce would have segregated cycle provision. And I think that our, our stance on that has just um, got stronger because of the um, additional uh, information out there, especially the publication of LTN one twenty on cycle provision, which does make that point quite clear that it would be a detriment to cycling um, for, for allowing more vehicles and specifically motorcycles into bus lanes, um, where cyclists have to mix with other vehicles. Um, so I think um, we're certainly not saying it's, it's a no and it, and it certainly won't be a no going forwards. But I think we do need the right location. And at the moment, whilst we've looked, we don't believe we've got that correct location um, on the back of the concerns that Kirkstall Ward members raised uh, on the A sixty five. I think the issues that were raised about um, trials that have been removed are in other areas of, of the country. Um, and I don't know whether Vivian has any of that information available. Um, Vivian?
Um, I think, I think one thing I could just add on, on the West Yorkshire picture is in Calderdale, I think a yeah, they, they, they do have a, a trial underway at the moment. Um, but I think obviously stretches of bus lanes in different places tend to be very different. So in Calderdale, um, the two structures they've got going at the moment, um, they only have one side road along that length. Um, and I think the main um, worry from a, from a safety point of view i- is those conflicts at side road junctions. And they have, uh, I think they are um, planning to go ahead with a, a wider rollout of, of um, access to bus lanes. But the other stretches of bus lanes they're going for have no side roads whatsoever on those lengths of bus lane, which is, is, is very different from a lot of the, the bus lanes we have in, have in Leeds. So yeah, i- 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 it's very much, I think you have to look at each bus lane.
Indeed, and, and I'm sure that we don't have any specific information in those locations about the width of the bus lane that obviously is, is referred to in the government guidance. Jonathan, do you want to come back on that?
Uh, yes, please, just um, just a few, a few more points, um, and then I'll, I'll pass over to others. But you know, th- this sort of feeling that, and this guidance that has come out, which suggests that cyclists are going to be in more inherent risk from a motorcycle than, you know, a bus that's using the bus lane or a taxi that's using the bus lane, I think is is, it just doesn't fly with me. I think, you know, if we'd have got on and done this when scrutiny board suggested that we do it and seemed to have agreement from officers at the time, then it would have preempted this guidance that's come out that, that's, or seems to conveniently be looking to derail this. Um, again, I mean, I, I do have to go back again to what Kirkstall Ward members are saying that point sixteen, um, if a trial was to go ahead, it should take place elsewhere in Leeds. It does bring me back to when we were first discussing this. And I do remember a comment that was made by a colleague who no longer sits on this board, that they were also happy um, for this to go ahead, as long as it didn't go through Armley, you know. If it goes through somewhere else and it, this sort of, I don't know, nimbyism that we're actually starting to come to expect from uh, from some, from certain quarters, I just really don't think is helpful. Um, and on a final point on that, the amount of um, initiatives that are imposed on the rest of us um, despite our uh, protests, um, which are much more longer term, um, I think also needs to be taken into consideration. Um, if this was a sort of decision-making uh, board today, I think I would be suggesting that uh, we write, write to the executive member, um, stating that this, this trial was to go ahead um, and that we see what the uh, outcome of it is so that it can inform how uh, bus lanes are, are, are put in in future schemes across Leeds. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jonathan. I think in fairness to our Kirkstall Ward colleagues, accusing them of nimbyism is probably a bit unfair. Um, and we could have discussions about nimbyism across the world in terms of developments and housing and loads of other things. So I wouldn't want us to go down that particular path. Um, I've now got Neil and then Julie and then Lisa and then Paul Wadsworth. So, um, Neil.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I've got in front of me an email from um, the, the Action Group. And I'll tell you that because I intend very, very quickly, as quickly as I can, just to read from it. And
Neil, Neil, we've all, we've all had it, we've all had it.
Well, I'm not sure you've had this particular one. Uh, let, let me
All right, okay.
Well, let me tell you that uh, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, eighteen, nineteen meetings, consultations and goodness knows what, publications, agreements, Waikia recommendations, all starting in autumn of twenty thirteen. And we're now very nearly in autumn twenty twenty one. It's eight years. Now, when you look at the report itself, uh, on page seventy two, it says the proposal aligns with the Waikia twenty four transport strategy. Well, at this rate, it'll be twenty forty before we make a decision. Um, potential delays to buses, there, there aren't any potential delays to buses. A motorcycle zipping down a bus lane cannot possibly hinder a bus, it's just not going to happen. A little bit down the same page, it mentions again the phrase we've been talking about, a city where we residents do not need to own a car. Well, this fits in perfectly with that strategy, unless the people who don't want it only want to talk about cycling and walking. Um, and looking on page seventy three about consultation and engagement, Hackney carriage operators, they had no objections. The cycle forum, the cyclists, we've heard about cycling, the Leeds cycle subgroup, no objections were raised. The bus operators group, no objections have been received. The emergency service, no objections received. Now, the only objections it seems to be are coming from the um, from the local councillors. And I, I could understand that if it was a question of this will now be going to happen. But it's not, it's a trial. Surely they're not, we wouldn't expect them to exercise a veto. It actually mentions veto in the uh, in the email. Um, and again, the, the option in terms of this inordinate delay of going to the six, the A six four seven, another two years. It just goes on and on and on. I think we really need, as councillor Taylor said, to just get this thing trial. It's only a trial after all. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Neil. I'll take that as a comment rather than questions that need to be answered. Um, Julie. I, I am conscious that Julie volunteered to substitute, but he's only available until one P M. So quite happy to bring you in at this stage, Julie.
Uh, thank you, um, councillor Truswell. And I, although I'm subbing, I do have some background uh, to this item um, from a constituent who regularly keeps you updated on this. And so I, I would like to just make a comment if I can. Um, councillor Taylor has um, covered some of the points I wanted to make. And although I, I don't agree with everything he said, um, he, he has covered some of the points. And we, we can't, I mean, we can't ignore local ward members' comments. That's what we're there for, to, to understand um, our area uh, and, and represent uh, the people who, 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 who obviously uh, want to speak to us uh, and want to flag uh, concerns up about uh, issues in the ward. Um, but I do think um, we need to um, we, we need to, to run a trial in the city. Um, it, it, you know, they all say if we don't, if we never do it, we'll never know. Um, and if we don't run a trial, we'll never know the outcome. Um, and I do think that we need to, uh, we need to run a trial. It's disappointing that it was September twenty nineteen that this decision was made and, and nearly two years later, we still haven't actually got to the trial. Um, so I, I am disappointed that we, we're still here, uh, still debating this and we haven't been able to, to run that trial. I would, I would be interested in more information on the comparison to the other cities in West Yorkshire. Um, thank you to offices for, for giving us the information about um, uh, the, the other um, authorities in West Yorkshire and, and the pilots or, or permanent schemes that uh, those authorities are now running. Uh, but I would like more information because in the report, you talk about the, the width and, and distances of the bus lanes that you're looking to trial this in Leeds. Um, yet we have cities, yeah, sorry, authorities around West Yorkshire who've done this. So I would be interested to, to look at how they did it, um, in more detail. Because, you know, what, what, what were the length of their bus lanes, the width of their bus lanes? How did they manage to, to run this pilot and in some cases make this permanent? Um, in comparison to what we're looking at in Leeds and the, but the, the particular bus lanes we're looking at in Leeds to pilot this thing. So I'd be interested to, to look at the comparisons uh, on that. Um, and uh, well, I, I'd say o- other, other members have made some of my uh, some of the points that I wanted to bring up. Um, but I, I do think we need to get on and run this, this um, this pilot. I, I'm not saying it has to be on, on, on the A sixty five, but we do, we do, you know, we need to find a suitable uh, area of the city where we can run this pilot. Because if we don't run the pilot, we'll never know how it works and, and we need to understand that. So uh, a- as all the, other, other authorities around uh, West Yorkshire have managed to do this. I'm disappointed we haven't managed to do it so far. Um, so again, I, I'd be interested in those comparisons and, and then we can maybe look at where we can run this in Leeds and uh, we can, um, you know, we can run a pilot. And then we can analyse the figures from that, the stats from that uh, and look at whether that's a sustainable, you know, long-term uh, solution going forward.
Yeah, thanks, Julie. I think we have um, we have covered so much of this ground in previous discussions and we, I think, run the risk of going round and round in circles if we're not careful. Um, I've got um, Lisa and then Paul. Oh, and then Mohammed.
Thank you, Chair. I will be brief. Um, I agree um, with, with what councillor Heselwood's just said about um, just the amount of work that's gone into, it seems to have gone into work uh, um, into planning this, this trial. And it seems pretty well thought through and widely consulted on. But equally, just to understand a bit more about um, the local councillors' concerns in that one ward, um, where they've objected. I saw the phrase, the perceived risk to um, to cyclists. And given our objective to reduce fatalities on the road and, and, and um, as an authority, this, decisions about something like this need to be based on data and an understanding of the data rather than on, on anecdote or, or perception. So I understand that there's two vulnerable road, sets of road users here. You've got motor, motorcyclists and cyclists. And, and are those perceptions about risks to cyclists actually founded on, on solid data? And, um, and just to have, before we abandon, uh, abandon this completely, just have a look at the data um, in a bit more detail. Apologies to officers, I'm sure um, that, that you're well versed in all this, this and you've done that. But if you can present that to representatives, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Gillian, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, so I think um, we can certainly come back with some data in terms of the current um, accident rates we have. Um, clearly at the moment, there's no mixing of the cyclists and the motorcyclists along the majority of the length. There is along, along some of it. Um, and I, I won't quote figures and I know we have got them. Um, so I can certainly circulate those um, after, after this meeting. Um, it's, it's difficult, there is a mixed pattern nationwide about motorcycling in, in, in uh, bus lanes. And I think that's the concern because I think it's very much on a, a case, a site by site basis and, and the issues raised by each of the sites where um, where we've got motorcyclists in bus lanes. Um, I think on, on this, I think what, just one other thing to raise was that the, the local Kirkstall Ward councillors did go out to local consultation. Um, they didn't share the full response from that with us, but they didn't, it didn't um, change their view about the concerns with the mix with, with cyclists and motorcyclists. So that's perhaps some additional information that isn't in the report. But um, as I say, we didn't get full response, the, the full data back from them on the consultation that they did, I think by social media.
Okay, thank you, Gillian. Does anyone else want to add to that? If not, I'll go. Okay, Lisa, do you want to come back in on that?
No, thank you, um, thank you, Gillian, that's helpful. If we could just look at the data, um, not just within Leeds, but, you know, as you say, other authorities and, and just make a properly weighed up judgment based on that data. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, i- 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 it's always difficult when you've got a long running issue like this that really has been covered and all that data and information has been covered in previous reports to the board. Um, but there's no reason why members of the board, if they want that data before finally making up their minds, uh, can't request it. Um, Paul Wadsworth and then, then Mo, Shazad.
Thank you, Chair. I, I find myself agreeing, not surprisingly with councillor Buckley, but also with councillor Heselwood. Um, I think I agree with councillor Heselwood before, it's not the first time. Um, this is a trial and, you know, um, nobody has really objected to it with regards to that. And, you know, eight years to get this in the making and then there is now a view to push it into the lawn grass for another two years and move it to another corridor. So what is to say that the ward members in another corridor won't like it? And just coming on to the ward members, the ward members obviously have reservations with regards to the centre of Kirkstall, but an awful lot of this bus lane is on the outskirts of Kirkstall. The, the area along the former Kirkstall forge has no residents at all particularly on there. Um, as past the Kirkstall Abbey and the area outside Yorkshire Television also has no residents. It's just a centre section um, that is really in question. And the people that use the A sixty five as motorists actually mostly come from my ward. Um, and so, you know, they suffer um, the confusion that is um, taking place on there at the moment with, with the fact that motorcyclists don't know whether they should use it or not. And we just need to get a clearer picture as to whether we should be allowing motorcycles into bus lanes. And as councillor Taylor says, whether those bus lanes in the future should be wider to accommodate it or whether they don't need to be wider to accommodate it. And the trial would give us that information. And so I feel that really to be held up by ward members, as much as I respect their views, but to be held up with board members, um, and no guarantee that we can move somewhere else in a timely manner, we really should move forward with this trial, Chair. And I think that's the way the board are going. I appreciate it gives you a difficult position, but um, I think that's where the board are going and Wes Mohammed's going to have a completely different view. That's a comment, Chair.
Thank you, Paul. Mohammed.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of agree with Paul for a change and, and for, and with councillor Heselwood. We do need to have this trial and, and the board did agree to have this trial. I mean, uh, i- is it the specific concern of, of the mixing in a certain part of the corridor of the cycles and the motorcycles together? Is that what's holding it up? Or is it just the concerns by ward members? Because obviously it, wherever we go in Leeds, we're going to get concerns as ward members. But we will ne- we'll never be able to take this trial on then. It will never be able to take place because then everybody's going to say, not in my ward because it never happened in Kirkstall or it never happened in Armley. So it's one of those things that we'll have to have the board uh, be firm on and say, you know, we've agreed to trial this and we, uh, we need the officers to come back and say, yes, we're, we're going to go ahead with it because we can't keep on delaying it, it'll just stay on our, uh, work uh, for, for the rest of the year and the following year. So we won't get no results. So I agree that we should go ahead with it if possible.
Okay, thanks very much for that, Mo. Um, I think one thing we shouldn't lose sight of is that our original view was that we needed to find a trial site. It's now very, very clear that this trial, if it took place on the A sixty five, would produce lessons solely related to the A sixty five and couldn't be extrapolated and applied to other bus lanes throughout the city. So I think we need to be very clear on that particular element. It's not going to fulfil the purpose that we originally thought it would. Um, Helen, you wanted to come in.
Thank you, Chair. Um, and I won't take up much time because um, obviously I'm new to this portfolio. Well, I still feel new to it from February, so quite um, far into this. Um, can I assure the boards, it wasn't just, I, I, I as an elected member um, take very seriously um, the views of all my colleagues, all take very seriously the views of all my colleagues, all 98 colleagues across the city. So of course I took, you know, very cognisant of the Kirkstall Ward members and what their feelings were and of their residents because that's who they spoke to and that's who they are answerable to. But it is a citywide issue and it's, but that wasn't the, as you've articulated Chair, it wasn't just the, you know, when I looked at what the cyclists said, they would prefer a bus lane with a segregated cycle lane. And that to me, my instinct makes a lot of sense. If we can find a bus lane with a segregated cycle lane, that would make much more sense. As you've articulated, this cannot be extrapolated to the rest of Leeds. And my instinct is that it would be very confusing if you could use that bus lane, but not that bus lane. And I feel as though we'd need a coherent kind of policy for the whole of Leeds if that was at all possible. But in terms of having a trial, well, yeah, I'm, I'm very much in favour of having a trial if we can find a suitable site. But it wasn't just the Kirkstall members that made us decide that we needed to come back to scrutiny to have a further discussion. And so I'll leave it there Chair. Thanks.
Yeah, and I think that's an important contribution Helen because at the end of the day and to reiterate what I've said before, this board doesn't have any executive function. This board cannot say, "You will, officers and executive board member, carry out a trial on the A65 or any other location." You've got to be prepared ultimately to implement the recommendation. So I think we need to make that clarification that we are not the ones making the decision. Ultimately rests with, with the executive board member, with the officers and maybe executive board in general. Jonathan, you wanted to come in again.
Yeah, forgive me. I don't want to go too much further into this, but just, just replying to what Helen said. You know, I do think that, you know, if, if this council take, took attention of what ward members and what residents were saying on everything, then my, me and my residents would be much happier people, but it doesn't always work that way. And I do think that motorists and people that use bus lanes in general are more intelligent than what we're giving them credit for here. There's various examples of where bus lanes are open to all motorists, weekends, evenings, that sort of thing, off-peak and where the cameras won't, won't snap you and give you a ticket if you're in it by accident. So I do think that we risk now this just bumbling on and then probably actually never happening if we don't stick with our original plan. And the Chair is right, it doesn't fall to this board to make that decision. It's probably an unenviable, unenviable position that you're in Helen. And so I do have sympathy with you there, but you do have to make that, that judgement. And as I said previously, if this was a decision-making board unpanned today, then I would probably be pushing that the Chair would write to you formally and ask you to go ahead with it. But as we're not, then I've just said it again. So.
Okay, well, I think we've been round and round this one. And ultimately, we need to decide what our recommendation, and I stress the word recommendation, is going to be. And we do actually have three options in front of us. One is to proceed with the A65. One is to go with the A647, which as Helen quite rightly pointed out, would be the preferred option of the cycle forum. And one is to reconsider the whole issue of having this trial. But as we said, it's not a trial that could, excuse me, used to learn lessons for other bus lanes. So actually, I think unless members of the board have got a contrary view, I'm going to go around each individual member to see what their view is on those three options. I think it's the only way of bringing this to a head. There would be another option and I throw this out and it's not an intent by me to prolong the discussion because it would only delay by a couple of weeks. We could actually have a working party that looked at this issue and did two things. One revisited some of the information. For example, councillor Martin would like to be in possession of more information and that I'm sure can be provided. And I think it might be fair to invite one or more of the Kirkstall Ward members to contribute. So I put for, I put that forward as another option. It wouldn't delay things for more than a couple of weeks while we arrange that working group. But it may be that people feel that that was unnecessary and they're already in possession of enough information. So the crunch point comes. I'm going to go around each member individually. I suppose there are four options now. One is the A65. One is the A4647, which would involve the delay that officers have mentioned. One is to completely reconsider our approach to this matter. And the fourth one would be to delay our recommendation so that we can get more information for those members who want it. And also I think invite the Kirkstall Board members to come and speak to us. So Neil. Sorry, John, you're alphabetically, what is your view Jonathan?
All right, thank, thank you Chair. You've obviously had, as you say, been around this a lot as a board over the, over the past time and I'm brand new to it. And so that's why I was listening rather than talking on this one. I, I think, I, I, I take your point and Helen's point that it won't really be a trial. If you said, right, you know, we, we, we see that it works well on the A65, then what do we do? We have one cycle. So my, my, my preferred, I think, would be, would be to say reconsider it. But I think now you put in that fourth option, I would probably, I'd probably go for that. I was sort of intending to abstain, to be quite honest, but I, I hate doing that. So I think I'll go for your fourth option and perhaps a small working group to have a, have a look at it, which is probably better than the reconsider option, which may just take us a much longer time.
Okay, can I say if the board was minded to go for that fourth option, I would make sure that everyone had the opportunity to request exactly what information and what they wanted to cover and that we wouldn't be raising further questions that then prolonged the process. So Neil, I think I know which way you're voting, but obviously you need to articulate it.
A65.
Okay, thank you. And Katie?
Option four for me.
That's a working group. Okay, Bob? I think he may have left us. Okay. Jules?
The option for the working group please.
Okay. I don't think we've got our if, have we? So Lisa?
Yes, option four please. Thank you.
Okay, Mohammed?
Chair, you've actually twisted me arm by adding an option four. So.
Oh, surely not. I did it in the gentlest way possible.
But you have Chair, because obviously we have got new members. I will have to take that on board. And then if new members are saying they haven't got the information that they require to make this decision, even though with a heavy heart, I would personally would go up for getting the trial done. But on this occasion, due to the fact that we've got new members and they haven't got the information, so they can't make a decision which is well informed. So for that reason Chair, because you've twisted me arm, I'll go for option number four.
Okay, Nicole?
Thanks Chair. Yes, definitely option four for me as well.
Okay, Jonathan?
Thank you Chair. Probably no surprise. I'd like to see the trial go ahead as was intended two years ago, which probably would have been more informative to us now than, than this meeting or a further working group on it. Thank you.
Okay, and Paul?
Not that this is going to make any difference, but A65 and as soon as possible.
Okay, well, I make that six votes in favour of a working group, three votes in favour of pushing ahead with the A65. And just to be absolutely clear, I hope that when we consult members about a convenient date, that as many of you as possible can participate. At the end of the day, I don't know whether, a recommendation can't come out of a working group. So it would have to go to the next full public meeting of the board. And I will circulate, or Becky will circulate an email asking you all precisely what further information you need because I don't want us to get into a discussion where further questions are raised and further delays take place because I don't think we would be doing ourselves or any of the other participants in this debate, any credit whatsoever. And basically, we will try and set that working group, group up within the next two to three weeks. Maybe three weeks because obviously I am conscious that Members' Diaries fill up well in advance. But we will try and make it on a day that is as convenient to as many members as possible, especially the newer members. But that does not mean that any other member who is unable to attend, that their views won't be taken into account as has been articulated at this meeting. I think that's only fair. Right, okay. So with that, agenda item seven, sources of work for the scrutiny board. I think this can be taken together with, with agenda item eight, which is the sort of provisional work programme for the year. The provisional programme, as I've said previously, was actually proposed by the predecessor board, eight of whose members out of 12 are on the board this year. So obviously that will carry some weight. Do take into account the point that councillor Martin made. I don't know whether he was at the pre-meeting or, yeah, I think it was, that this shouldn't preclude our ability to expand our work programme to include other issues that emerge during the course of the year or that they feel are important issues. But actually, I think the two examples that Lisa mentioned previously will both be incorporated in our discussion regarding inclusive growth strategy. So does anyone have any points on seven and eight other than those? Or can we accept the work programme as it stands, as our provisional work programme, subject to any future additions or refinements? I'm seeing a lot of nodding, no objections. Okay, I think we're all worn out. You're either nodding because you're agreeing or because you're dropping off. I don't know which one of the two it is. And I think that brings us to the end of the agenda. And I think all it falls on me to say is that the next meeting, as I indicated in the email that I circulated yesterday, I think it was, or the day before, will be at 10am on Thursday, the 22nd of July. I think the reason why slightly earlier is that on that day, I'm assuming there's another meeting, possibly executive board, and we need to finish in plenty of time for relevant things to, to take place. So there'll be a pre-meeting at 9:45. But thank you very much everyone for your attendance. I think we've, we've had an interesting discussion as always and I think you, I hope that you feel it's been worthwhile. So enjoy the rest of the day, whatever it holds for you and I'll see you whenever, and if not before, on the 22nd.